Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
Yes, I wasn't necessarily expecting a response, but thank you so much for that. My name is Gustavo Rivera, state senator for the 33rd district in the Bronx and chair of the Health Committee in the Senate. And I will introduce my colleagues in a second, but we are here today. We thank you so much for joining us, both here and online. And we're here to receive testimony on how to identify and examine best practices for[28.14][28.14]integrating doulas into New York's maternal healthcare system, as well as recommendations for policies that provide sustainable medical reimbursement rates for doulas. And I'm very proud to be joined by my colleague, whose baby, I should say, this hearing and this issue is, pun very much intended, my colleague, the Chair of the Mental Health Committee in the State Senate, Senator Somer Bruck.
Thank you. Good afternoon, everyone. Thank you so much for joining us. As Senator Rivera said, yes, this is my baby, but I also have my other baby that I actually gave birth to. And she is 10 months now and was really one of the reasons why I am so passionate about doula care. But the other reason I'm passionate of why we're here today is because here in New York and across the United States, we have a growing maternal mortality crisis. And so, we know that that crisis is even more dire for Black and Brown birthing people and women. We know that the United States is one of the most dangerous places for someone to give birth. In New York alone, Black women are five times more likely to die in childbirth than white women. In New York City, women, Black women are nine times more likely to die bringing a child into this world. And I know I speak for many of us, when we think about that moment of bringing a child into this world on our own terms, when we choose to, it can be a very joy-filled time. But unfortunately, that joy is so often robbed from millions of Black women across this country, and instead, it becomes a daunting experience, really wondering if you'll be able to walk out of that hospital or birth center with a healthy baby. And I want to just use this moment to bring to life the dire situation that we're in. Because we've heard so many stories about women who have fallen through the cracks and who have been a part of these statistics, and I think they deserve their names to be spoken. Shemani Gibson, 30 years old, died 13 days after giving birth. Amber Rose Isaac, 26, died due to complications of an emergency C-section. Shassia Washington, 26, from undergoing a C-section. Jaza Torres, 27, died post-delivery. Denise Williams, 29, 58 hours after seeking postpartum care for a pulmonary embolism. This list is not exhaustive, but the truth is, we know these names, and this is the fear with which we go through the birthing process, oftentimes as Black women. And what we need to remember is that in New York, 78% of maternal deaths in Black individuals were declared preventable. And we know that a crucial piece of combat combating this mortality crisis, maternal mortality crisis, is the role of doulas. Doulas are non-clinical professionals who offer physical, emotional, and informational support before, during, and after birth. That's all I'll say about them right now, because you are going to hear so much from our doulas and about our doulas throughout today. But I do think it's important that we know, not only is this a crucial piece of health outcomes, but it also addresses maternal mental health conditions, that oftentimes doulas are the first to recognize postpartum for our birthing people. So today, we will hear from witnesses from across New York State and beyond, in fact, to share their insights, both as doulas, as healthcare providers, maternal health advocates, even insurance providers, so that we can learn how to better make doula care more accessible for those who need it. Because Black mothers deserve better, and we're going to do better. So thank you, and with that, I will turn it back over to my colleague, Senator Gustavo Rivera.
Thank you for that, Senator Bruck. The numbers and the names that my colleague read into the record more than clearly tell us why this is such an essential conversation to have in the state of New York. The last couple of years, we've actually done some things to advance the cause of protecting maternal health in the state of New York. There's a couple of bills that I'm very proud to have sponsored and passed in the last couple of years. One of them, back in 2019, establishing the state and city maternal mortality review board. Another one, on that same year, relating to established obstetric hemorrhage protocols. And one that we just passed last year, which related to accreditation, approval, and operation of midwifery birth centers. But that is just the beginning. And certainly, what we're doing today is we're going to focus specifically on the roles of doulas, and what we can do, and what we must do in the state, to make sure that they're more accessible to birthing people all across the state of New York. I'll recognize that we are joined by, this is obviously a, this is not a Republican or a Democratic issue, it is a New Yorker issue, and I'm very thankful to be joined by Senator Jacob Ashby, as well as by Senator Leah Webb, from the Democratic Majority Conference and from the Republican Conference in the Senate. Some quick housekeeping things, as far as procedure. Each testifier will have 10 minutes. There's a clock right in front of you, and if you hear me start to [coughs], you will know that perhaps your time is a little bit past. But we certainly want to have an opportunity to hear from everyone here. So as far as my colleagues, there will be five minutes for the chairs and three minutes for members to ask questions, only one round. We did two in the big room when we're doing the budget ones, we're going to do one here. But we're incredibly thankful for all of you for joining us, both here and online. And we will start it off, panel one, with Dr. Ursula Bauer, Deputy Commissioner for Public Health, who is joined, are we going to, are we doing this one panel? So Jennifer Main, Director of the Maternal and Child Health Policy for the Office of Health Insurance Program, and Kirsten Sigenthaler.
Sigenthaler.
Sigenthaler, thank you, Director of the Division of Family Health. Each one of you will have 10 minutes, starting with Dr. Bauer. They'll control it up there. Speak, let's see.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Senator Rivera, Senator Bruck, members of the Senate Standing Committees on Health and on Mental Health. Thank you for inviting me to testify at this public hearing examining best practices for integrating doulas into New York's maternal healthcare system. It's an honor to join you today to discuss the benefits of doula services to improving maternal and birth outcomes, and helping to end racial disparities in maternal mortality and morbidity. Among wealthy nations, the United States is the least safe country in which to have a baby. And within the country, New York ranks 23rd among U.S. states in maternal mortality. New York's maternal mortality rate, according to the 2017 to 19 data, is 19.3 deaths per 100,000 live births. And while this statistic is already high, and worse than the National Healthy People 2030 target of 15.7, the mortality rate for Black women is far higher. The maternal mortality rate for Black New Yorkers is 59 deaths per 100,000 live births, nearly five times the rate for white women. Although they account for only 14.3% of all live births in the state, Black, non-Hispanic women account for 1/3 of all pregnancy-associated deaths. According to the Maternal Mortality Review Initiative, which the department established in 2010, when New York ranked among the worst in the nation for maternal mortality at 46th, the majority of these deaths are preventable. One of the activities within the initiative is the State Maternal Mortality Review Board. The board was established by Public Health Law Section 2509 in 2019, and reviews each pregnancy-related death in New York. According to the latest report, 78% of all maternal deaths could have been averted. We need to change our model of care to address the largely preventable deaths that are claiming the lives of people who give birth. Which brings me to the topic of our discussion today, the benefits of doula services. To address the crisis of poor maternal outcomes, public health professionals and lawmakers are increasingly looking to doula care as a promising and cost-effective intervention. Doulas, also known as birth companions or birth coaches, are non-medical personnel who assist and support a pregnant person before, during, and after childbirth by providing physical, emotional, and informational support. Doula services have been shown to increase positive health outcomes, including reducing birth complications for the mother and the baby. The benefits of such support are increasingly recognized. The American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists notes that ongoing doula support during pregnancy is associated with improved health outcomes. People of color who are pregnant too often report a lack of respectful care, and sometimes report mistreatment from healthcare providers. And Black people who give birth are more likely to have their pain and other symptoms minimized or ignored. Doulas can help ensure that all pregnant people, including those who are vulnerable to discrimination or neglect, receive the attention and the care they deserve. Doula support covers a lot of ground, from helping clients adopt healthy behaviors and prepare for childbirth, to communicating more effectively with healthcare providers. As part of its ongoing commitment to reduce maternal mortality and eliminate racial disparities in health outcomes, the department's Office of Health Insurance Programs launched a Medicaid doula pilot program in 2019 to cover doula services for Medicaid-enrolled pregnant people living in Erie County. The pilot covers up to four visits with the doula before delivery, up to four visits with the doula after delivery, and doula support during labor and delivery. Thirty-seven doulas are currently participating in the pilot project in Erie County. As of January 9, 917 people enrolled in one of six Medicaid-managed care plans, or Medicaid fee-for-service, have participated in the doula services pilot. While the pilot is still ongoing, we've learned some important lessons already. For example, to date, approximately 82% of claims are for prenatal visits, 6% are for labor and delivery support, and 12% are for postpartum visits, indicating that doulas are providing services throughout the pregnancy, birthing, and postpartum periods, although particularly that prenatal period. Additionally, pilot participants are sent a survey to assess satisfaction with the service. To date, 97% of respondents said having a doula improved or somewhat improved their childbirth experience, and 92% rated their doulas as good or excellent, suggesting the service adds to patient satisfaction. Finally, while the pilot was initially planned for both Erie and Kings County, very few doulas enrolled in Kings County due to the low reimbursement rate. The pilot did not launch in Kings County due to this low enrollment. This was a strong signal that a higher fee schedule is needed to adequately cover doula services. That is why I'm pleased that Governor Hochul is proposing to expand Medicaid doula coverage statewide in the fiscal year '24 executive budget, and increase reimbursement from $600 to as high as $1,500 per pregnancy, including coverage for prenatal labor and delivery and postpartum visits. The Federal Centers for Medicare and Medicaid Services, the New York State Task Force on Maternal Mortality and Morbidity, and the New York State Expert Panel on Postpartum Care all recommend expanding access to doulas as a strategy to improve maternal and infant health outcomes, to reduce racial disparities in health outcomes, and to improve the quality of maternal healthcare and the healthcare experience for pregnant people. Increased access to Medicaid-covered doula services here in New York State may be expected to reduce the effects of systemic racism on pregnant birthing and postpartum people, to reduce the rate of cesarean section and the associated costs, and increase spontaneous vaginal births, decrease the length of labor, reduce the incidence of instrumental delivery and episiotomies, and increase satisfaction with the birth experience for Medicaid enrollees. In closing, several state Medicaid programs include doulas as billable providers and reimburse for doula services provided to Medicaid members. These states include Maryland, Florida, Minnesota, New Jersey, Oregon, and Rhode Island. Statewide Medicaid doula services and benefits are in development for California, the District of Columbia, Michigan, Nevada, and Virginia. States have examined their reimbursement rates, and these are trending up over time, with some states, such as Oregon and Rhode Island, considering the $1,500 reimbursement rate now under consideration here in New York. Finally, broadening access to doula services, especially to people enrolled in Medicaid, has much potential to reduce maternal mortality and help eliminate the disadvantages Black women experience in society and in the healthcare system that place them at significantly higher risk of poor birth outcomes and maternal death. I welcome the opportunity to expand access to Medicaid doula services statewide and learn more about the benefits of doula services in improving maternal and birth outcomes. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Bauer. Director Main?
So Dr. Bauer has provided the testimony on behalf of the Department of Health, and Kirsten and I are here to support her in the question-and-answer period.
Thank you so much.
Okay, great. Thank you so much for being here with us today and all the work that you're doing on behalf of maternal health. So I wanted to start, Dr. Bauer, or Director Main, or Director?
Sigenthaler.
Sigenthaler. Sigenthaler, we got it. I wanted to start with some of what your testimony talked about in terms of the increase in rate that the governor is proposing. So I think it's important, ahead of that question, to go back to one of the things I was going to say in the opening remarks about what doulas do, that I think you described, but I do think it's important, some of these things, to keep into context when we think about what the reimbursement rate could be. So when we look at things like doulas spend six to 11 times as much time with a birthing person and their partner than clinical staff do or clinical providers, right? That they decrease cesarean rates by 50%. Mothers who use a doula are four times less likely to have low birth weight, two times less likely to experience a birth complication. These are huge outcomes that doulas provide with their care. So I think we all agree $600 does not cover that. Even if I did quick math of eight visits plus labor, which by the way, could last 48 hours, consecutive hours, right ladies? Okay. So $600 is not workable. But I do want to know, how did you come to the $1,500 number? The $1,500 rate was arrived at after reviewing other state Medicaid reimbursement rates, as well as managed care rates that are currently in play, and really, the $1,500 was found to be at the top end of range for reimbursement rates currently provided through insurance and Medicaid. So if there were to be a breakdown of what that would be per visit or per hour for an average length of a birth, which, you know, is 25% shorter when there's a doula, so, but do you have any idea what that breaks down to in terms of an hourly rate? The way that we've structured the reimbursement for the $1,500 is across provision of different visit types, right? So some of the reimbursement is for a rate that's set for the prenatal and postpartum visits, and some is for the labor and delivery support, and this is consistent with the way that other state Medicaid and managed care programs have done it as well. Thank you. And the last piece about the rate, do you think it's possible that this isn't enough? You know, in my position as a state legislator, all I hear about is, you know, New York State's a very expensive place to live, and when you're doing this really grueling, both emotionally but also physical work, and it's ongoing, and it pops up, and you're not really sure when someone's going to go into birth, or go into labor, do you think that we might learn somewhere down the line, or perhaps before, you know, this goes into effect, that $1,500 might not be enough for this kind of work in New York State? $1,500 is, you know, the rate where Medicaid has landed as the reasonable rate for the reimbursement to begin this benefit. Well, we'll put a pin in that, and we'll come back to it. So the second question I'll ask, which probably will use the rest of our time, is around this idea of cultural competency, right? So, you know, we look at this issue in terms of a racial justice issue, in terms of a birth justice issue, we all just talked about the disparities when it comes to Black women, especially in birth, and we know that having someone you can build trust with who has a cultural competence, who understands perhaps your perspective, your lived experience, shares your, you know, lives in the same neighborhood, whatever it is with that cultural competence, how have you looked at making sure that that is prioritized when we think about doulas who are working within this Medicaid system? So last year, we published an update on the Medicaid perinatal care standards, and these standards are a policy that applies to all payers and providers of maternal healthcare services under the Medicaid program. And within that, we've published principles, the principal standards for the providers to adhere to, addressing within those, that the providers must adopt a philosophy that is culturally informed and addresses the inequities and racism that are within, you know, that are structural within the system. So that's, you know, where we start with all providers, and doulas as Medicaid-enrolled providers will fall under those principles as well. Beyond that, though, we are looking at this service as a way to really be able to provide that kind of supportive advocacy within the broader healthcare system for individuals so that they, it lessens the impact of some of that experience within the healthcare system. That's my time. Thank you so much.
Thank you for being here, for your testimony. I wanted to ask specifically, there was one of the bills that I mentioned earlier, related to obstetric hemorrhage protocols. Could you give us a sense of how that's being implemented?
Sure, I can help with that. So in the New York State Department of Health, we have the Perinatal Quality Collaborative. It's a statewide quality collaborative that works with some of the major associations, like the College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, as well as the hospital associations. And we work voluntarily with the birthing hospitals, and for a recent multi-year quality improvement project, we had one for the hemorrhage protocol, and it included integrating that. And I believe we had 83 hospitals, and it represented over 80% of births in the state of New York. And so, the way that the Quality Improvement Collaborative works is through an intense professional development, coaching, mentoring model, so over multi-years with monthly calls, data collection, and data review. And so, we support those hospital systems to implement these protocols, to look at their systems, to understand, you know, how the system is working or not working, and then make small tests of change. And so, that is how we have implemented a hemorrhage protocol into our hospitals. And we think it's an evidence-based model that results in systemic change.
Because I know that, as the maternal mortality review board has actually provided that data that has been provided because of it has been helpful in establishing these protocols, right? Has it been, do you feel that it's been helpful, the data that has been?
Absolutely, the data have been helpful. I think the perinatal quality collaborative work with the hospitals receives information about the maternal mortality review board reviews, as we all do, and the reports and the recommendations, and that information is integrated, as well as the information learned and data collected during the perinatal quality collaborative helps inform the maternal mortality review board itself. So there is a lot of communication and shared knowledge between those two events.
Now that there's a recent report that they issued that recommended a full year of Medicaid coverage following delivery to reduce?
A full year, I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
I'm sorry. So that recommended, a recent report recommended a full year, a full year of Medicaid coverage to, following delivery, to reduce postpartum maternal morbidity and postpartum infant?
Correct. And I can ask my colleagues, if you want to check with the Medicaid coverage for one year, that postpartum? That was a recommendation, and that information was shared with the Office of Health Insurance Programs?
Yeah, and that's moving forward with the coming year, the postpartum coverage extension to 12 months, so.
And I know this is not a budget hearing, but I just wanted to make a point that there is a, there is a delay in the implementation of that as it relates to undocumented folks that the administration has proposed in the current budget. I don't know if you have an opinion that you'd like to share, if you think that perhaps we should actually implement it now?
So.
Don't want to get you in trouble, so if you don't want to comment?
Yeah, we'll take that back, yeah.
I was just, just wanted to say for the record that certainly, in your professional opinion, certainly you agree with the report's findings, that doing this would be a positive thing, so be a little?
Absolutely.
Yeah, no, we certainly use the recommendations from the report in our process of policy and budget development, and that was an important finding, and I think one that other states are also moving to support, the 12-month postpartum period with outbreak in coverage.
So as we, I hope as we move on to the final stages of the budget negotiation, that we can actually have this be implemented this year, that would be a good thing. Senator Webb?
Oh, it is.
They have it up there, they have it up there.
Oh, sorry. Thank you, thank you so much to the panelists. I know we have limited time, so I'll ask my two questions. My first question picks up where Senator Bruck was talking about, as relates to cultural competency. For me, more specifically, I'm looking for, is cultural competency, and more specifically, racial health equity training required for providers and practitioners, whether you are currently certified or as part of the certification process? And then my second question relates to, as we know, doulas play an important role in the overall care, maternal care process, and so we know that there are incidences of bias that happen. My other question is around, like, how do those incidences get tracked? Like, if I was a doula, and I've expressed, like, I'm caring for this mother or birthing person, and I've raised this issue, and it's kind of gone ignored, like, what accountability measures do I have, or that may exist? So those are my two questions.
Sure, I can help with that. Similarly, so through that perinatal quality collaborative, we have a birth equity improvement project that's been going on since 2021, and it continues now. So we're working with over 70 hospitals, which represent three-quarters of the birth, and it is an anti-racism systemic project. And so, the major goal of that is, again, a multi-year, intensive, professional development, at which time that kind of training is provided from external speakers, as well as coaching and mentoring among experts, as well as the peer-led. We do a lot of data collection, and the two major areas that we're looking at are clinical outcome, as you might expect, and low-risk C-sections, so actually reducing those. But the second measure is actually a patient-reported experience measure. So it's a simple set of 10 questions that patients are answering as they leave, either on an iPad, or they get a QR code to use their cellphone. We have it in 16 languages, and it asks questions about respectful care. Things like, "I agree that I was treated with respect," or "I was included in decision-making," or "when something, when they couldn't do what I wanted, they told me why." So it's a set of, as I said, 10 simple measures. And so, this is a voluntary program, but we have broad participation and strong interest from hospitals to participate in that. And so, we're just in the process of collecting that data. We will share it publicly, but we don't have enough yet to do that. But I think this is actually an important model, that we can infuse training while also helping hospitals look at their systems, and then asking both clinical questions, but also patient-reported experience, because as Dr. Bauer said, we too often hear about, you know, people reporting that they didn't receive respectful care. So we emphasize that as much as the clinical outcomes. So I think that's an important way that we can do that work.
And I'm a big advocate for those kinds of trainings, and we know we don't like the term mandate, but I feel like there are certain things that should be, and I guess we can talk offline with regards to the accountability piece. You know, what's the recourse for doulas who may have lifted these issues of concern? How does those, how do those concerns get tracked? And what's the follow-up? Thank you.
Thank you.
Senator Webb, we've been joined by Senator Julia Salazar. Next will be Senator Ashby, three minutes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Dr. Bauer, in your testimony, you talked about other states that have implemented programs that we're looking at today. Do you know if they've considered or have implemented a certification or licensing process in those states, and is that something we should be pursuing here in New York?
So it varies by state, and this is somewhat of a new process, and as you look at what states have done over the past several And as you look at what states have done over the past several years, much has changed in the process, including the fee schedule that, that we've been hearing about. So there's ongoing learning in this, this process. But you may want to talk about the training and certification.
Sure, yeah. So like Dr. Bauer said, it varies from state to state in terms of what they're requiring for certification and training. And that will be, the final details of that will have to be negotiated via our state plan with the state plan amendment that will be submitted to CMS. But right now, you know, we do have the pilot underway, and what we require via that pilot for doulas to enroll is that they have to attest to having completed formal training as a doula. So that will give us a starting point. You know, we're going to review that process and propose and see if that's sufficient. And then there'll be other standard training, which is usual for Medicaid-enrolled providers, like standard HIPAA training, mandated reporter training, those kind of things will apply to the doulas as well.
So we're looking at, we're looking at other states, but we're not, we're not basing our decisions or kind of modeling what we're looking to do off of, off of them. Is that, would that be fair to say?
That is fair to say. We're not replicating any individual state out there. We're really interested in engaging with our New York State doula stakeholders to give some input into this process in terms of, you know, where they would like to see some of this land in terms of uniform certification.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Ashby. And with that, thank you so much, folks, for participation. And we're going to go to the second panel. Panel number two will be Michelle Zambrano, co-lead for the New York Coalition for Doula Access. Twyla Dillian, I hope that I'm pronouncing that name correctly. Doctor, I'm sorry, Dr. Twyla Dillian, Executive Director for Health Connect One, and Anastasia Livovich, Clinical Director for the Bronx, for the Bronx Health Link. Give us a second to get your name tags there.
Twyla.
That's Dr. Twyla?
Yes, Twyla Dillian.
Twyla Dillian.
Dillian, yep.
Perfect. All right. So we'll start from Dr. Dillian. That way, each with ten minutes.
Certainly. Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Twyla Dillian, a mother of four children, born in New York State, 24, she dropped me off at the train station, nine, six, and one, she cried when I left. I currently live in Monroe County, where, per Common Ground Health's report, the color of health, the Black community, has a 51% higher maternal mortality and a 300% higher infant mortality rate than the white community. These numbers are unacceptable, and even more stark downstate, where mothers have up to 12 times more likely risk of dying from pregnancy-related causes. This information is dated, as most reports are. We've seen in the news that the COVID-19 pandemic, mental health struggle, opioid crisis, and social determinants of health have dramatically exacerbated these numbers. My first birth experience was one where I did not have the advocacy I needed to mitigate the trauma of racism which is entrenched in our medical model. Many years and several births later, I knew the importance of having culturally congruent care from my midwife and my doula support. My last birth was joyful and healthy. My lived experience, training, and career led me to serve as Executive Director at Health Connect One. Health Connect One is the national leader in advancing equitable, community-based, peer-to-peer support for pregnancy, birth, breastfeeding, and early parenting. We train, mobilize, and connect communities in service of birth equity. While birth support and informal doulas have existed for centuries, Health Connect One developed the first formal community-based doula training model in the U.S. in the 90s. HERSA identified Health Connect One as a community-based doula leadership institute in 2008. Health Connect One has trained doulas across the country, and we're active at over 60 sites across the nation. Doulas can disrupt families' experiences of harm, mistreatment, and adverse health impacts by advocating for birthing people in the medical system while enhancing birthing people's feelings of agency, security, and respect. Doulas provide nonclinical, emotional, physical, and informational support before, during, and after labor and birth, and have been consistently shown to improve birth outcomes and experiences of care. The community-based doula model responds to the disinvestment within Black, Brown, and Indigenous communities by providing culturally reflective support and access to information and referrals at little to no cost. So what do we know about the impact of doula support on clinical outcomes? I can speak directly to the impact on the ground with our training site, Healthy Baby Network in Rochester, New York, where they are serving Black birthing families for free with a pilot grant from the Finger Lakes Performing Provider System. Among 177 Black families referred to the Healthy Baby Network pilot, there is a 22.8% C-section rate compared to the 33.6% New York State average. There's a 96.4% breastfeeding initiation rate compared to this, the rate at New York State for Black community of 67.4%. And, something I'm very proud of, there's a 9.5 out of 10% patient satisfaction rate. Zooming out at a national level, when serving the Black community, Health Connect One partners have yielded impressive results, including 24% less use of C-sections among community-based doula participants compared to the national PRAMs average of 30%. Also, longer breastfeeding duration, 37% compared to 17% PRAMs average, and exclusivity among Black mothers at 39% compared to a 7% PRAMs average. You may already know, each avoided C-section provides over $4,000 in medical care savings and reduces the risk of hemorrhage, one of the leading causes of maternal mortality. Higher breastfeeding rates lead to both short and long-term cost savings for both mother and baby in the form of avoided illnesses and chronic disease. Over the long term, the cost of suboptimal breastfeeding in the U.S. is estimated to be $13 billion per year for pediatric costs and an additional $18 billion per year in maternal health costs. Our data and the volumes of research around community-based doula work indicate that it is saving lives, particularly in Black, Brown, and Indigenous communities, where support is most needed. In recent years, there's been increased attention on improving maternal health and addressing longstanding inequities in maternal health outcomes in the U.S., including expanding access to doula care. That's why we're all here. Despite the established benefits of community-based doulas in reducing the impacts of structural racism and addressing disparities in maternal health, sustainable funding for this work is inadequate. Health Connect One recently released a policy paper entitled "Getting Doulas Paid," very to the point, and hosted a well-attended webinar for its launch. I can direct anybody who wants directions to that paper. This paper was authored by Zainab Z. Sulaiman, our VP of Advocacy and Health Impact, and the work was generated by the Doula Data Consortium, which is a group that Health Connect One co-facilitates with Sister Red from California. The group is focused on tracking and studying the effort of community-based doulas across the nation, as the way that doulas work cannot be compared to clinicians. So if you remember nothing else I said today, remember this part. They meet birthing people in the community and in clinical settings, in person and remotely, day and night, and everything in between if there's an in-between, anytime. Due to inadequate pay, community-based doulas often balance several jobs to support themselves and their families. This, paired with the impact of trauma, both direct and vicarious, that comes with support in communities that often have the greatest need, can result in burnout. To be sure, what we have learned in our work across the nation is that if you build it, they will not come. Medicaid reimbursement alone is inadequate to attract community-based doulas. Medicaid enrollment and reimbursement processes need to be uncomplicated. Rates need to be appropriate. For the intensity and time associated with their work, and the collaborations with clinical settings, state government, and managed care organizations, need to be such that doulas are welcomed. The doula-ready accreditation model, being piloted by Health Connect One and the doula-friendly framework developed by New York Coalition for Doula Access, are both working to improve how doulas interact with systems that were not built with them or other community-based birth supports in mind. Medicaid doula reimbursement at an appropriate rate is the first lever in ensuring that doulas can advocate for the families who need them most. These doulas also need advocacy for themselves so that they can avoid the many barriers they currently face to fulfilling their roles in hospitals and with payers. Our national work has highlighted how vital education on how to best collaborate with doulas is in systems where they are showing up more regularly. Legislation is urgently needed to support the growth of robust community-based doula workforce and provide sustainable state and federal funding for this community-based work in perpetuity. I am urging you to learn from the errors of other states who have been on this Medicaid doula reimbursement journey ahead of you. Engage in the community-based, engage the community-based doulas, rather, and families, and work collaboratively to ensure that the rates are appropriate, even if that means revision. It is better to get it right and know that the support that your constituents need is available. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Dr. Dillian. Zambrano?
Thank you, Senator Brooke and Senator Rivera for holding this hearing today, and thank you to the senators for being in attendance. My name is Michelle Zambrano. I'm the Program Director for the nonprofit Health Leads and co-lead for the New York Coalition for Doula Access, which I'll refer to as NICTA for short. I am testifying on behalf of NICTA in favor of including an equitable Medicaid reimbursement rate for doulas in the New York State FY24 budget. New York State is in the middle of a maternal health crisis that disproportionately affects historically marginalized communities and underscores the racial health inequities across our country and our state. We have all heard the statistics many times, so I won't repeat them, but we don't have to accept this outcome. It is time to prioritize the health of Black women and birthing people, as well as the birth workers who care for them. Evidence on the benefits of doula support has been clearly established through peer-reviewed research, so I'm, I am here today to talk about ensuring financial sustainability for the doula workforce. Providing an equitable Medicaid reimbursement rate with increased access to doulas help retain doulas in the profession and improve health outcomes for families. It will also make New York a leader in addressing the maternal health crisis and a safer and more equitable place to give birth. NICTA recommends that New York State implement an equitable reimbursement rate of $1,930 that covers up to eight prenatal and postpartum visits at $85 per visit, and labor and delivery support at $1,250 per birth. An equitable reimbursement rate ensures that the doula workforce is sustainable and can meet the increasing demand for doula support. These recommendations represent unprecedented alignment across 195 stakeholders, including doula practitioners, patients, doula organizations, hospital administrators, payers, and health department officials from across the state. Using Shelling Point Analytics, this group engaged in a three-month process to align around advancing an equitable Medicaid reimbursement rate for New York State doulas. While the New York State pilot in Erie County was successful in connecting patients to doula care, it offered one of the lowest reimbursement rates seen in the country. Our proposed rate constitutes the highest. That is because this rate covers additional uncompensated doula care and expenses, such as resource referrals, phone and text communication, travel, transportation, and the administrative costs associated with Medicaid reimbursement. Currently, I, I heard the $1,500 amount being spoken about earlier. Currently, the citywide doula initiative reimburses at a rate of $1,500, and they did not consider those expenses in their rate, and so they feel that that rate, even for their program, falls short. That's because doula care is a high-touch model of care, which limits the number of clients doulas can work with, ranging from one to three clients in a given month, and this is a direct result of the time needed to provide personalized care that is focused on relationship building and trust. Doulas do not have the administrative and billing infrastructure of traditional healthcare providers, and those costs must be factored into the reimbursement rate in order to make it sustainable for doulas to sign up as Medicaid providers. Doulas are small business owners who contribute to their communities and also have their own families to care for. The doula workforce is primarily female, and community-based doula programs are reflective of the communities they serve. So the staff are predominantly women of color who can offer culturally congruent care, which we heard is so important. Our next recommendation is to provide funding for community-based doula organizations to continue to train and support community-based doulas to help meet the increased need for culturally congruent doula care. NICTA concluded that doula training is sufficient to satisfy levels of professionalism and formal certifications, or restricting reimbursement to only certified doulas is not necessary. Training requirements should ensure that doulas are adequately prepared to work with clients who have been historically under-resourced. Our final recommendation, as we hope to see statewide reimbursement for doulas become a reality, is for the state to work with NICTA to ensure doulas have input on the implementation of equitable Medicaid reimbursement, and can inform key policy details such as training requirements, reimbursement process, and educational campaigns related to doula care. As I was preparing for this hearing, I was speaking with someone who is not in this work, and they asked outright, "Why is a doula needed? What is their role when you already have a medical care team there?" So I will share one brief story from Jericho Road Community Health Center in Buffalo. They participated in the pilot, and they are also a part of NICTA, and they allowed me to share this story since they could not be here today. So they work with a large refugee population, and there are often cultural and linguistic barriers which their doulas help address. As so often happens, a client went into labor in the middle of the night, and when she arrived at the hospital, the language she spoke was not available through the interpreter line, and she was unable to understand the hospital staff until, until her doula, who spoke her language, arrived. When the doula walked in, the client said, "You are like water in the middle of a desert." That is the role of a doula. That is why they are needed on the care team. The work doulas provide is life-changing and life-saving, and doulas deserve a living wage. The time to invest in the sustainability of this workforce and the health of our state is now. An equitable doula Medicaid reimbursement must be included in the final 2024 state budget. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Zambrano. Ms. Livovich?
Good afternoon, senators. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in regard to best practices for integrating doulas into New York's maternal healthcare system. There is a dire need to address the problems with maternal healthcare and the subsequent maternal mortality and morbidity rates in New York State. Over the past several years, the Bronx, like other parts of the country, has seen the rate of Black maternal mortality increase at a disproportionate rate as compared to that of other communities. The Bronx's mortality rate is higher than the rates for the city and the state at large. Even larger is the rate for Black women than for women of other races. This is not a new problem, yet we need new solutions to create immediate and long-term change to protect and serve all the people in our state. These solutions must incorporate ways to address multiple stakeholders, parties who have already been hurt by the system, parties who are within positions of power to call out and rectify both our best practices, as well as our complicity or active participation in the harmful parts of the system, and to build a sustainable new culture and practice of medicine with Black and Brown communities at the forefront. I sit before you today wearing many hats. I'm a native New Yorker, born and raised in the Bronx, and born, in fact, at one of the hospitals where many of my patients now deliver, Jacoby Hospital. I'm a licensed New York State midwife, practicing over the last 10 years in nearly every setting across the state, but mostly in my hometown of the Bronx. I am a clinician educator working with various learners in the South Bronx, committed to elevating the awareness of medical professionals, preparing them to create the changes collectively that we so desperately need. Within my FQHC Urban Health Plan, I also work to create curriculum of study that cultivates self-aware, resilient, evidence-based practitioners to serve the South Bronx and beyond. Before COVID-19, I led our centering pregnancy program, providing group-based, community-building care for our patients. I'm also active with the University of Rochester School of Medicine, creating a mindfulness and anti-racist curriculum of study to bring to my peers. Before entering healthcare, I was a sixth-grade public school teacher at PS 86 in the Bronx, an adult basic education instructor working with disconnected youth through various nonprofit organizations, and a teacher of ESL for recent immigrants. My transition from an educator to midwife included a pregnancy of my own, working as a WIC peer counselor in the Morrisania section of the Bronx, and training as a doula. I'm immensely grateful to all of my students, my patients, my peers, and my mentors who collectively have supported my work in affecting positive change in the Bronx. My newest role is that of Clinical Director at the Bronx Health Link. Along with Shirley Leroux, our Administrative Director, and all of our staff and partners, we aim to support and uplift the amazing work happening in our borough. We strive to collectively envision better ways of doing medicine and community building so that the women, families, and birthing persons of the Bronx can have access to care that supports a holistically safe and healthy experience. This includes safety of body, mind, heart, and spirit. Pregnancy and birth can be an extremely vulnerable and transformative time. Let us create spaces that honor that time in a person's life, honor the effect on the family, and strengthen families and communities. Our proposal for best practices to integrate doulas into the maternity care system is embedded in a three-pronged approach. Briefly, we believe that sustainable change needs to include a restorative justice aspect to help heal the harm that has already occurred. A program by which current medical professionals, still mostly a white majority, can hold each other accountable to breaking cycles of violence that we are witness to or participants of. that we are witness to or participants of, and supporting the work of established Black and Brown doula organizations, as well as training community members interested in pursuing doula or licensed maternity care work. Our current program, the Bronx Doula Access Project, is part of the third facet of creating sustainable change. In the current state of medicine, doulas fill many valuable roles, yet also increasingly find themselves needing to act as interference for their clients, providing both education and support while sometimes needing to help pregnant and birthing persons avoid problematic care. Doulas also fill the gaps of knowledge and care where our system is lacking: emotional support, breast and chestfeeding education, mental and physical well-being education, risk reduction information, a kind and compassionate person who can listen to concerns and worries, as well as providing hands-on care and support for the discomforts of pregnancy and labor, to name a few. Our hope through B-DAP is to create systems that provide a doula to anyone in the Bronx who desires to have one, to educate and inform clinicians about the gaps in care that doulas and other supportive agencies can fill, and to further the conversation of improving the healthcare system with stakeholders. Conversations regarding open and communication and collaboration that ensures that our birthing persons have respectful, evidence-based care with clinicians who are working to eliminate racial bias in medicine. The Bronx Doula Access Project is the Bronx Health Link's approach to filling the gap of the New York City Citywide Doula Initiative. Through B-DAP, the Bronx Health Link currently collaborates with The Birthing Place, ASHA Birthing Services, the Conscious Birth Collective, and the Wombus. Respectfully, these local doula organizations provide childbirth education, prenatal and birth doula services, postpartum doula services, and material incentives and products that support creating more ease for families. We've been fortunate to receive funding from State Senator Gussava Rivera, who, as you all know, is the chair of the New York State Senate's Health Committee, as well as funding from the New York City Council to create a model that we hope is local, sustainable, and able to be scaled and studied, and that brings local doula organizations in direct contact with the patients who want them. As clinical director, I am responsible for creating collaborative relationships with peers in local healthcare facilities and in the hospitals in our communities. We currently have partnered and worked closely with the midwifery services of both Bronx Care and North Central Bronx Hospital to create a framework of collaboration so sorely needed to pave the way for the best use of doula care, with a doula as a support to the process of a healthy and safe birth, not an obstacle for providers nor a shield for the client. We believe that having clinicians that are committed to addressing the Black maternal mortality crisis and who are able to speak directly to their peers supports the efforts of increasing accessibility and doula-friendliness, but also in changing the models that the whole process is improved. In this case, the care of all women, but specifically Black and Brown women, improves. Beyond our current work with B-DAP, we also propose funding to be awarded to creating capacity building within our communities. The WIC Peer Counsel Program has been transformative for participants, both as trainees and as the recipients of support and education provided by members of our own communities. I hold the Morrisania WIC Peer Counsel Program as an exemplary model and envision a similar capacity-building endeavor to provide free, certified, or trained, high-quality education for Bronx persons who desire to become doulas, and to find paid work supporting others in the community to change outcomes for those who find themselves creating families and birthing in the Bronx. Bronx Healthy Start has embarked on similar programming, and we propose more funding for projects that bridge the gap of accessibility, as well as create a grassroots base of trained, skilled doulas. Much of the studies have centered around the physical health disparities, death and injury during the childbearing year disproportionately affecting Black women. We would be remiss to not also include substantial increases to supporting the mental health and well-being of our communities, specifically of Black women and their families. Mental health is an issue across the entire United States, particularly after COVID-19, and, not surprisingly, especially serious in the Bronx, where consistently for too many decades residents experienced the worst outcomes across the health spectrum, including mental health. As we continue to provide maternal infant care to our Bronx community, it is also important to recognize that mental illness ranks as the second most common cause of death among those who have recently given birth. Perinatal mood and anxiety disorders are very common among birthing persons, and we want to address this distressing statistic by expanding our programs to include workshops and groups that both educate our community, but also properly and efficiently refer persons living with PMATS to the appropriate professional services. In closing, the Bronx Health Link will continue to champion any initiatives which challenge our maternal health system to do better for all patients, but especially for the Black and Brown persons entering care. On a personal note, I may as well have witnessed and heard from patients and peers alike both extremely supportive and transformative experiences in maternity care, as well as those that were extremely harmful. None of us are unaware of the women who have already lost their lives in the crisis, as named earlier today. The Bronx Health Link is committed to developing and supporting communities of medical professionals who want to do better, communities of Black and Brown doulas who want to continue to serve, and, most importantly, to the people and families of the Bronx. Thank you for the opportunity to testify today on the Bronx Health Link's views about this most important topic. The time to act and address the Black maternal mortality crisis was yesterday, and we must have a creative, collaborative, collective response to address it. Protecting the lives of all of our birthing persons is everyone's business, and I believe that everyone present today is ready, willing, and able to act. Thank you.
Thank you so much for being with us today. I misspoke earlier, and I was reminded by my co-chair here. For the rest of the panels, all my colleagues will get three minutes, including chairs, and I will start off with my colleague, Senator Brooke.
Thank you. Thank you all for being here and for all of your work in your respective communities, but also the work you do statewide and across the country. So my first question will be for Ms. Zambrano from NICTA. So you mentioned the reimbursement rate that NICTA is supportive of as an equitable reimbursement rate. Can you remind us what that rate is?
Yes, it's $1,930 total, and that is broken out into eight prenatal and postpartum visits at $85 a visit and $1,250 for labor and delivery support.
And earlier, the commissioner did talk about bringing stakeholders together around making sure that we are making the right decisions as a state. Have you been involved in those discussions as a stakeholder? Has there been representation from NICTA?
So in our project, the alignment project we took on, there was some representation from the New York State Department of Health. They collectively provided some input on our rate, but they were not able to fully participate due to conflict with setting their own rate, and we have not been in collaborative conversations with them. And so we would request that NICTA work collaboratively with the State Department of Health to address the discrepancy in the reimbursement rates that we're proposing.
So simply put, do you think $1,500 is a sufficient reimbursement rate?
I do not. I do not think our coalition members feel that that is a sufficient rate. I have data here around the living wage broken out by state. So New York State, obviously, is a very expensive state with a high cost of living. When you look at Oregon or Rhode Island, which have the $1,500 rate proposed, they have a much lower cost of living. So I have those numbers if you'd like.
Yeah, I would talk about it all day with you. But I want to get one more question in, and you can follow up and send us. I just wanted to be clear on that. My next question is to Dr. Dillian, because you do so much work nationwide. I'm curious, and I think you alluded to it in your testimony, but is there a state that has gotten this right?
No.
Do you think New York can get it right?
I believe strongly New York can get it right because of all the people who are sitting here, many of whom I know. I think that there's a lot of potential. What I stated when I was speaking earlier is that we do need to pay attention to what is happening currently and what has occurred in other states. I'm not sure who stated it earlier, but the fact that we're not looking at what other states are doing could be us shooting ourselves in the foot. There's a lot of really good stuff happening in California. There's a lot of really good stuff happening in Illinois. I go to many meetings in Illinois, and I'm actually contributing to those because HealthConnect once started in Illinois. They have a much higher rate that they're proposing.
What's that rate?
I don't know if I'm allowed to say.
Okay. But it's more than $1,500?
Much more. So when I'm allowed to say, I will share that information back through you. But they're paying attention to how much time, how much time and effort is required, right? It's expensive to put all that time in and to travel. There's just so many elements. So varies widely and so many different methods. I've got a ton of stuff to give you, but I only have a second.
Thank you so much.
Senator Webber.
Thank you all again for being here. So I have two questions, open to any panelists. In addition to reimbursement and funding supports that is clearly needed, what other resources would be helpful for doula recruitment, retention, and also their utilization by health providers and practitioners? That's my first question. And then my second question, you know, as the chair of Women's Issues, one of the things that we often talk about is access to reproductive care, like the whole package. And so as doulas, you're helping folks to navigate really complicated health issues. And so I was curious as to what educational resources do your respective organizations provide with regards to giving that information to patients?
I'm happy to jump in on the other things that could be available. Medicaid enrollment is not straightforward in any state, right, for anyone, and that's a huge hill, but if we're able to get over that, I'd be very proud to be a New Yorker. I've seen so many machinations around getting set up, huge packets of information for doulas who are not legally prepared. They have to read through that or find someone to support them, and then don't feel comfortable signing off on things. Complicated reimbursement processes, those are two things. So enrolling in Medicaid and getting paid, right? If those two things can be done correctly, and of course, the rate be appropriate, then I think we'd be really ahead of the curve. Also, support for doulas. So beyond actually paying doulas, they need support in a network of some sort and having that built in a way where there are resources for that. I know NICTA's off to an excellent start with that, but how do you resource something like that so folks actually have a place to go, to have reflective supervision, to really talk about things, and to continue advocating for themselves?
And to speak to the first question as well, I really do think we need clinician allies. I think that the healthcare delivery systems and the clinicians need to be involved in this process because there are clinicians who are committed to changing the rates and committed to this effort, and they need to be part of the process to run the interference, so to speak, that doulas are encountering. There's no reason why clinicians are not participating more in doula integration.
Yes, and to that point, I will say the other goal of NICTA is to promote doula-friendly hospital policies and create a designation for doula-friendliness. And as we see more doulas as part of the care team and present at hospitals, we feel that it's really key that we establish those standards.
Yeah, and I think that's important, as we've been talking about and we've been hearing, is that the public doesn't fully understand the impact that doulas have and could continue to have. And so that's why I raised those questions around, like, how are people even getting informed about the availability of doulas within their respective areas? So, thank you.
Senator Salazar.
Thank you, Chair.
All right, no, you're good. Take care.
Great, thanks. And thank you all for your testimony, for taking the time today. I wanted to start by asking, because Ms. Libovic, you've mentioned in your testimony, certified or trained, could you speak about the barriers to certification and why a doula, even an extensively trained birth worker, might be deterred from obtaining certification?
Well, I think of the models that we already have, sort of the WIC Peer Counsel training is near and dear to my heart. We have trained IBCLCs training peer counselors, and the peer counselors don't necessarily become certified, but are highly trained, culturally competent from the communities, who otherwise would not have the kind of training, would not have access to obtaining the kind of training needed to be that service in their community. And similarly with doulas, we find the same problem, is that it's cost prohibitive to attend a certification that often may not even be culturally relevant or relevant to the communities that they're living in and serving in. So I find that sort of a hyper-focus on certification takes away from what we're actually looking for, which is culturally competent, trained, skilled professionals.
Thank you. And I wanted to ask Ms. Zambrano, is there also an effort separately, and I know we don't want to put the cart before the horse, but is there also a separate effort to expand Medicaid reimbursement to also cover postpartum care that doulas may provide?
So in our proposal, we do include the postpartum visits as well. So it would be eight visits total in whatever combination, prenatally or postpartum. So depending on when the client comes into care, there could be more postpartum visits.
Got it. Do you find that it's very common for doulas to provide postpartum care, and for how long typically do you see that?
Yes, typically, it's about four visits postpartum. That includes, you know, a screening for postpartum depression, follow-up with the client, sometimes accompaniment to the postpartum visit for the client. So it's a very crucial time. As we know, most maternal deaths happen in the, you know, up to a year postpartum, so it's a very crucial time for doulas to be involved in care.
Excellent. Thank you.
If I may say something about the postpartum period, as a clinician, our postpartum rates are abysmally low. And so the doula's presence in a postpartum setting at the client's home or some connection to the client is critical because patients are not coming in for postpartum visits for various reasons, and it is responsible for a lot of the rates of depression or other issues.
And also another reason why doulas should be paid, right? They're extending that reach.
Thank you.
Now, while I certainly thank you all for the work that you're doing across the state, I do have to focus on my folks from the Bronx. What is it that we in the Bronx are doing right? What do you think that we could actually, you know, export?
I think that what we're doing right is we have clinicians that are aware of the problem. We have local doula organizations that are hyper-aware of the problem and ready to step in, and are stepping in in programs like we have with the Bronx Doula Access Project. We have committed people that want to serve our communities, that know our statistics, and that are tired of the statistics being the same over and over again. I think that we have midwifery service departments that, such as North Central Bronx, which is exemplary in providing really high-quality care, evidence-based care, and we have just an amazing diverse, we have amazing diverse communities that are all ready to chip in.
So one thing that you talked about a little bit, I wanted you to expand on it, about how doulas sometimes run interference against problematic care. Could you expand on that so that we can get a sense for folks who might not know about that role that you all play?
I'm happy to, and I do recognize that there will be people speaking after me who have more expertise on this, but from a clinical standpoint, I can say that doulas often need to facilitate a sort of intermediary or interference role between a provider or a nurse and a patient. And so between passive aggressiveness, microaggressions, or blatant racism, oftentimes doulas will need to be navigating those conversations so that they don't reach the patients necessarily. Sometimes also doulas will need to step in and talk to patients to really explain to patients what their rights are. There are many clinicians doing a lot of good work in maternity care, and there are many clinicians that don't recognize a woman or a birthing person's right to informed refusal or informed consent. And oftentimes, other people in the room, such as a doula, will have to run interference in that setting.
Right. Thank you so much, all of you, for being here today. We'll move on to our next panel. We're good. Next panel will be Denise Bolz, who is CBE founder of Bold Cellar LLC, Shannon Johns, who is the president and founder of Calming Nature Doula Services, Esther Patterson, who is co-chair of the Board of Directors of Birthnet, and Christina Hernandez, breast, birth, and postpartum doula, founder and CEO of ALO Saratoga. Just want to make sure that we get that. All the speakers are supposed to be? All right. We will start with Denise Bolz. Would you like to go last? You want it to be last? We can always switch it up.
Thank you.
Okay. So would you mind being first, Ms. Johns?
I can go first. It's okay.
Go ahead, Ms.
Thank you so much for inviting me and putting together this testimony. It's a really important discussion that really needs to be had. So my name is Shannon Johns. I am the owner of Calming Nature Birth Doula Service and Center. I am a certified doula, a certified lactation consultant, as well as a childbirth educator. I'm a mom of six. I've had six vaginal births myself, some with support, some without, and one just completely by myself, just trying to figure it out. So I understand the importance in having someone there and present with you and not having anybody other than your own thoughts and being around, you know, quite a few people that you really don't know if they have your best interests in heart, or if they're really just getting off of work in two hours and they want to hurry up and get done and be gone. So my job as a doula, I have been present for many different types of births. I have attended home births, birthing centers, and hospital births. I've supported families during unmedicated and medicated births. I've attended vaginal as well as cesarean births. I've witnessed successful Vevex, which is a I've witnessed successful Vevex, which is a vaginal birth after a cesarean, and also to some that resulted in repeat surgical births. Being present for so many different types of births, there has always been too consistent ask of the birthing person or mother. The first is, will you be there? And the second ask that I get is from my black mothers who say, can you make sure they don't let me die? Our work as doulas extends far beyond comfort measures and labor positions. Although these are two very important aspects of our work, that isn't the totality of our work. We work and build relationships with families during pregnancy. Sometimes before, we have families that book appointments and sign contracts before they even get pregnant because they know and understand the importance and the value of having a doula present. And that is for the purpose of creating a rapport with them. We gain an understanding as to who these individuals are, what's important to them, what's important to their family, what's important to their culture. We learn and, you know, what values they hold around birth, but also too what their family's experiences are with birth. A lot of times, especially when you're dealing with different cultures of families, they take their mother's experience, their sister's experience, their cousins, their neighbors, people around them that have given birth, and they take that experience and they believe that's norm, whether it was a good experience or not. So we take that into consideration when we're meeting with families as well. We want all birthing people to know and understand the, that, no, I'm sorry, understand how their labor experience also affects their baby's birth experience. Through education, we help families understand the importance of being an active participant in their own health, but also to their baby's health. During our prenatal appointments with our clients, we provide them with a template for a birth plan. Now, when we're creating this plan, we kind of look at it from a different spoke, I'm sorry, a different scope. They're encouraged to write this plan based upon how do they want to tell this story to their child? What key components of that day do they feel will be important for this child to hear? We encourage them to add tools that motivate them, that motivate them through their birth experience, tools that provide emotional, mental, and inspirational strength to them. We ask them to envision sharing this story about the day that they were born to the child and what story do they really want to tell? What version of them as a new parent would they like this baby to meet on their birthday? Do they want to tell about a traumatic birth experience? Do they want to tell how they felt they were being tortured, disregarded, or feeling like they were going to die? Their sweet infant being born now was a punishment to them because of how much pain that they had caused them and tried to kill them just to give birth. That the moment of becoming a mother equated to the worst day of their life. So if you think about just that statement and the perception of how that's going to feel to this child from their mother telling them, this is what my day was like when I met you. That's something that can be very taxing, emotionally draining, but also too, it can play on the social and emotional impact on a child as well. Our other option is, do you want to tell the story of the day that you found your maternal strength? A story where through education, planning, preparation, through mentally, emotionally, and physically, you felt connected for birth? A story of security and a trust for the people supporting you and going through the journey of birth with them? A story that had some challenges but were conquered? A story that says the day that you were born helped create a strong, confident, patient, mentally and emotionally stable mother for you? Considering both of those, doulas encourage families to be the best parents that they can be, not only for their child, but also to help prepare and educate future generations of their families. There are a number of studies and statistics that show better birth outcomes for mothers and babies when a doula is present. Also documented benefits of being more likely to rate their birth as satisfactory, more likely to have spontaneous vaginal births, and more likely to breastfeed for an extended period of time. The state can help to improve these benefits by recognizing doulas as professionals. I believe with a professional recognition, medical providers will also be more aware of the role and the value that doulas provide to their patients. In a conversation with a managed care organization representative, it was stated that there has been a significant financial benefit to insurance companies as a part of the Medicaid pilot program that also resulted in positive outcomes for their consumers. However, the doulas serving these families covered under Medicaid are not typically adequately compensated for the scope of work that we do. The current New York State Medicaid reimbursement rate needs to be increased. Access should be available throughout the entire state instead of just a pilot program for one county in the state. When the payment increases, this will also increase the accessibility options of them to families who will be more likely to want and have doulas, but also too, more doulas will be available to attend those families to help improve these outcomes. As a Medicaid provider for the Erie County Pilot Program, when the pilot program first rolled out, we had no idea of what to do, how to do it. And the state gave us some instructions, but they weren't as detailed as they needed to be for the work that we were being asked to do. None of us as doulas had any medical, like coding billing or training, none of that type of preparation. It was like, okay, you guys have to go out, reach out to these insurance companies, get credentialed with the insurance companies, and that's how you do your billing. But we're not going to provide the training to tell you how to bill these insurance companies. We're not going to tell you what the process is for billing as well. So we reached out to the insurance companies. The insurance company said, okay, here are the contracts. Some contracts were nine pages, some contracts were 40 pages. And if, you know, if you don't understand kind of legal jargon and knowing what it is that you're signing, it takes time to go through each one of those contracts. So that's one of the things I did. I went through every single contract, took notes from all of them, and kind of made a cheat sheet for all the other doulas that take Medicaid that wanted to enroll as a provider for Medicaid and say, here's the quick version of all of this. So this way, you don't get overwhelmed, you don't get discouraged, you don't get frustrated, and then quit. Which is what a lot of doulas do. They just see the amount of work that's being asked of them and they just quit because it's too much at times when you have no experience. So there was some challenges with it. So I made this cheat sheet on how to, you know, get the enrollment started, or not enrollment, the billing process started, but how to actually submit the claims and how to fill out the claim form. We don't have a lot of codes, so that made it a little bit easier, you know, because when you're doing CBT codes and all those things, it can be very overwhelming. But that was like one of the things that we were missing. And the amount of time that it took me to kind of sit through and go through, I think it was six or seven different contracts from the managed care organizations at this time, to say, this is what these people are asking for, this is what this company is asking for, this is how you fill out the form for Fidelis, this is how you fill out the form for Blue Cross Blue Shield. But there was no guidance for us. We essentially had to do that ourselves. So I want to thank you guys for inviting me to speak today and kind of putting this together for all of us. I really appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Johns.
Thank you.
Christina Hernandez?
Hello, my name's Christine Hernandez, and I'm a mother, a birth and postpartum doula, and the owner of ALO Saratoga. And I wanted to thank you all for the opportunity to give my testimony today. As we have heard over and over again, the United States is facing a maternal and infant health crisis. Black and brown birthing people are dying of pregnancy and birth-related causes at a rate of, depending on who you ask, sometimes three, four, or five times higher than white birthers, according to the Centers for Disease Control. In the state of New York, approximately 31% of live births occur by cesarean section, despite the recommendation of 10 to 15% by the World Health Organization. That means 31% of people are sent home two to three days after having major abdominal surgery to care for a newborn when they aren't even supposed to be walking up a flight of stairs. In addition to the dangers to their physical health, birthing people are also facing a mental health crisis, which has only gotten worse post-COVID. After all the many visits a pregnant person has, after birth, there is minimal follow-up care. Most postpartum visits with a care provider are not scheduled until six weeks after birth, leaving perinatal mood and anxiety disorders to go unnoticed and untreated. Not to mention the current screening process. A paper questionnaire a birther fills out is barely enough to assess an individual's mental status. Even if someone is identified to have a perinatal mood and anxiety disorder, access to mental health services is nearly impossible to find and difficult to access. Doulas have long been filling in the gaps in care provided by our mental health care system. Trained in supporting pregnancy, birth, and postpartum, doulas have the unique opportunity to work closely with birthing people and provide physical and emotional support during childbirth and postpartum. Studies have shown that doula support during childbirth lowers the risk of cesarean by up to 39% and improves maternal health outcomes overall. Shorter labors, less unnecessary medical intervention, and higher APGOR scores for babies. Doulas encourage people to advocate for themselves, letting them know what their rights are as a patient in the hospital system. They also encourage agency and ownership of the birthing experience, helping to combat the discrimination and marginalization that some birthing people face in our medicalized maternal care system. They provide reassurance and emotional security for birthing people, especially in marginalized communities where people feel disempowered or uncomfortable with their care providers. They help facilitate connection to community resources and develop a relationship with the birthing person that continues long after the postpartum period, leading to a greater sense of connectedness and safety for birthing people. Having pregnancy support that comes from within people's own communities fosters trust and eases anxiety. Currently, there are many barriers to accessing doula services, and they exist and range from the lack of availability of doulas to financial constraints. There are barriers to certification of doulas, some of which we've heard about already, but training programs for doulas, especially programs offered by larger national organizations, can be expensive. Certifications may need to be renewed regularly, requiring dues to be paid to the certifying body. By offering scholarships or providing sliding-scale trainings, we create more doulas, allowing more people to work for themselves while improving maternal health outcomes. Affordability of doula support is an issue as well. Doulas spend a large amount of time with their clients. People have talked about this a little bit, but I don't think anyone really understands the scope of how much time a doula spends with their clients. And the all-on-call time as well. In fact, like when I was asked to confirm whether I could make this hearing today, I said, yes, except if I get called to a birth. Because I'm currently, my phone's in my pocket, I'm on call, and at any moment, I might need to get up and drop and get my doula bag in the car and head to the hospital. So if I do stand up and run out, please know it's only to go to a birth. But so, yeah, like just an enormous amount of time. A birth can last anywhere from a few hours to a few days, and ensuring a doula is paid adequately for their time and expertise leaves some of the most vulnerable populations unable to afford their support. Many doulas, especially community doulas working in low-income communities, work on a sliding scale or offer pro bono work, but this leads to burnout and isn't sustainable on the part of the doula. Private insurance companies have begun reimbursing for doula support, but still require the birther to pay out of pocket. We have yet to find a solution for making doula support equitable and accessible while ensuring doulas are compensated fairly. Medicaid coverage of doula support is a step in the right direction for improving maternal and infant health outcomes. However, careful consideration needs to be taken in determining which doulas are eligible for Medicaid reimbursement. Previous bills, like the vetoed Assembly Bill A 364B, have outlined requirements for creating professional standards for doulas, including participation in a national training program, which does not account for the many community-based organizations that have been training doulas to work in their own communities. If criminal background checks lead to exclusion of people previously incarcerated for a nonviolent offense, it limits a doula's ability to work for themselves and continues the cycle of systemic oppression black and brown people face. The medical system's view of a doula's role is not always favorable. Work needs to be done around elevating the role of the doula, we are not visitors, and integrating doulas into the medical system in a way that benefits both the birthing community and the doulas. Ensuring the integrity of the doula-client relationship remains intact and does not become too formalized or too medicalized. This is another issue I feel with compensation, is like, how do we even sort of put a price tag on the kind of relationship that you develop with your client and your client develops with their doula? Some recommendations for integrating doulas into the medical system. Better utilizing pediatricians' offices. We have a lot of things in place already that integrating doulas into those systems could benefit birthing people, and it wouldn't be so much of a lift. One of the first places a new parent goes within a day or two after leaving the hospital is to the pediatrician. Sometimes people aren't even able to stand up and walk to the bathroom, but they have to bring their new baby in a car seat, maybe sometimes by themselves, to a pediatrician's office. And there, the care is solely focused on the baby. But what if there were doulas on staff at a pediatrician's office that speak with the mother, separate from the doctor who's seeing the baby and really have this like conversation about how they are doing and not just how their baby is measuring and weighing, and now you need to breastfeed more and this and that, and all the other things that we hear at those visits? So the standard of care for an infant is to have a physical exam within the first few days of life, whereas the birthing person isn't seen for up to six weeks postpartum. Having doulas on staff at pediatricians' offices, WIC offices, so they can visit new parents in their home postpartum or consult with them in office, can help identify postpartum medical complications or mental health concerns faster and connect families with community resources. This can lead to improved breastfeeding rates, as well as improved physical and mental health of the birthing person. Offices should work to employ doulas from their surrounding communities to maintain a level of comfort and trust with the people that they serve. Hospital-based doulas. Many hospitals have launched hospital-based doula programs aimed at lowering cesarean rates and improving birth outcomes. These programs, when implemented properly, can change the culture of the entire hospital, leading to fewer unnecessary medical interventions. They also help to elevate the role of the doula, allowing doctors and medical professionals to experience the value they bring to a birthing person's experience and ultimately makes their job easier. Equitable pay for doulas. When the reimbursement rate offered by an insurance company is considerably lower than the market rate for private pay services, it discourages providers from partnering with insurance companies. This affects the quality of care provided and the accessibility of the professionals who accept insurance. Medicaid reimbursement for doulas should be on par with the market rate for private pay doula services in the community where a Medicaid recipient lives. This attracts more doulas to provide support to Medicaid or other health insurance recipients and may encourage more people to enter the field in general. Thank you for allowing me to submit this testimony and for your efforts in helping New York State become a model for the rest of the country when it comes to birth outcomes and maternal mental health.
Before we go forward, considering the testimony we just heard, although I'll never say this in any other hearing, I would encourage folks to turn on your phones to make sure you do not miss if there's a birth happening.
Thank you.
Go right ahead, if that's the case. Make sure you don't miss it. Ms. Patterson?
Good afternoon. I'm Esther Patterson, and I'm the co-chair of the Board of Directors of a local birth justice organization called Birthnet, whose mission it is to eliminate the inequities in birth outcomes for all birthing people. I am a mother, a mentor, an educator, and I am a birth doula. I've been doing birth work in the capital region for over 20 years. They didn't always call me a doula. I'm here to give testimony on the value of integrating doulas into New York State's maternal health care system. Doulas save lives, period. Let's begin there. It is a statistical fact that the presence of a doula decreases maternal mortality and morbidity, reduces preterm birth, decreases the incidence of surgical birth, and decreases the use of medications and other medical interventions in birth. Having a doula present increases breastfeeding rates, maternal satisfaction and mental well-being after birth, and helps make birth the joyous experience and event that it should be. In our state, women are dying during birth. And black and brown women are dying at a much higher rate than their white counterparts. Two to three times higher, as are their babies, three to four times higher. This is unconscionable. There are many factors that impact these startling statistics. Implicit bias, institutional racism, and social determinants of health for marginalized families. Further, black and brown birthing people report being disrespected, not seen or heard, having their plans or preferences for birth ignored, their experiences of pain disregarded, and their symptoms of life-threatening complications dismissed. The news and hearings like this are full of such reports. Doulas are a part- Doulas are a part of the solution to this healthcare crisis, Black and Brown doulas particularly. I represent Birthnet of New York. We are a group of women who are community workers, nurses, college professors, midwives, and doulas who volunteer their time to this nonprofit organization because we believe in the mission of eliminating the inequities in birth outcomes for all birthing people, but especially the marginalized birthing people whose voices are simply not heard. We at Birthnet fundraise specifically to train and compensate BIPOC doulas to serve those families most negatively impacted by birth disparities. In 2019, we trained 22 doulas of color here in Albany to support parents and families during birth, during their breastfeeding and postpartum. At the end of this month, we will train an additional 30 Black and Brown doulas to work in the community to continue to improve the mortality and morbidity rates of birthing parents. Doulas provide constant support during birth. They visit families both prenatally and postpartum. They are a watchful eye for anything outside of the realm of normal and healthy. Doulas safeguard and protect the rights, the agency, the autonomy, and the cultural sensitivities and preferences of laboring people with their continuity of care, their advocacy, their hands-on support measures, and their ongoing emotional and informational support. When a mechanism exists for doulas to bring their services to the most vulnerable of populations, these populations become much less vulnerable. They become healthier, stronger, and more mentally and emotionally stable. They become better equipped to manage the major life transition of birth and parenthood. They become better connected to the healthcare system when complications arise. When Medicaid reimbursement for the work that doulas do in and for marginalized communities exist, doulas can be paid for their work. Many Black and Brown doulas working in low-income communities are not equitably compensated for their work, and in many cases, they are not compensated at all for their time and their talent. This is unsustainable. We must find solutions for making the support that doulas provide a built-in option in our maternity care system. There is a healthcare crisis in New York, which fatally impacts families of color. There is evidence, there are evidence-based solutions, which involve training and paying BIPOC doulas to serve the needs of BIPOC families and significantly improve birth outcomes for them and for their babies. The answer lies within the community. Birthnet has been a part of the solution to address this deadly crisis. Please help us to continue our work and support the doulas we train by providing Medicaid reimbursement for the services that they provide. Together, we can save lives. Thank you for your attention to this critical matter and for the opportunity to address this public hearing on how to identify and examine best practices for integrating doulas into New York's maternal healthcare system. New York can easily elevate its own standing in the country when it comes to addressing maternal and infant morbidity and mortality by simply elevating and compensating BIPOC doulas for the positive impact they make in saving the lives of Black and Brown birthing parents and their babies. Thank you for your time and attention to this important matter.
Are we good now?
We're great now.
You're good?
We're great.
Go to it.
Okay. Good afternoon. My name is Denise Bolds. I am a native New Yorker, born in Harlem Hospital. I live in New York City. I hold a master's degree in medical social work. I'm also an advanced certified birth doula and a certified lactation counselor, certified childbirth educator. I've been in the profession of labor doula for nine years and 259 births of experience. This is my full-time job. I am known as the high-risk doula. My niche is supporting families and hospitals as a result of my 40 years of being in hospitals as an allied health worker, case manager, and medical social worker. I am familiar with all the hospitals in New York City and quite a few in northern New Jersey. I thank you all for listening to me today, and I thank Senator Brooke and the Senator's Standing Committee on Health for inviting me to testify. In nine years, I have supported births as far as Albany, New York, all the way down to South New Jersey. I am here to share with you some of counts of what I've witnessed and experienced in my capacity as a labor doula. The topic for this hearing is how to identify and examine best practices for integrating doulas into New York's maternal healthcare system. I currently sit on the Doula Advisory Committee for New York City, as well as a Doula-Friendly Committee for New York City. I'm also working with the major hospital system as a consultant on the topic of doulas and labor and delivery departments. What I have witnessed is problematic. The fact, while there was a mandate from the prior governor of New York State declaring doulas as essential workers, hospitals here in New York City and Long Island choose when to allow doulas in and when to shut doulas out, regardless of the mandate from the governor. How and why do hospitals have so much power? There is evidence provided in clinical journal articles which confirm the benefit doulas provide to hospitals and institutions. Doulas increase customer satisfaction, reduce C-section rates and interventions, and increase breastfeeding rates. Yet, with this known evidence, doulas are still fighting to have a seat at the table of maternal health. There are many hospitals that simply are not doula-friendly. There's not a rest or break room for doulas. There's no inclusion of accommodations for doulas. And as I stated above, there's no consistency on having doulas as part of the labor team in a professional and respectful way. Doulas are harassed by security and by nurses and administrative staff on everything from verification of certification, and when can they come in and do their job? So many times, I've been told how to do my job by physicians, nurses, and administration when they realize that me being Black did not mean that I was part of Food Service or the Environmental Service Department. If you doubt the intensity of what I'm saying, I would like to remind you of an app called IRTH. IRTH was developed by Kimberly Seals-Allers, where doulas and families can actually write about their experiences at hospitals and the treatment by the clinical staff in the institutions they work in in order to collect this data to show the existing problems in labor and delivery departments across the nation. Unfortunately, this is just not a New York State situation, but a national one. I'm sure you've all seen the IC video by the nurses at Emory Hospital in Atlanta, Georgia. Those nurses are here in New York State as well. Some labor and delivery departments actually lock up their food pantries where the ice machines are, making these resources inaccessible to doulas and supporting their families. They're locking up ice machines. For years, the conversation has been on the table about doula reimbursement. Yet, hospitals who benefit so greatly from the presence of doulas always walk away from the table and feel they're not accountable to contribute to the solution. There are several hospitals here in New York City that actually have doulas as part of their care team, and they have noted the positive outcome of doing so on labor and delivery and mother-baby unit floors. There have been questions about billing, CPT codes, and ICD-9 codes for insurance. Why aren't doulas allowed the designation of being an allied health worker? Why are doulas still treated like visitors? And by the way, I did find out a little bit of history of what happened with the CPT/ICD-9 codes. You can ask me that question later. During the pandemic, I made national news by providing one of the first cases of virtual doula support to my client. Her husband and I sat in the car in the hospital parking lot as she gave birth upstairs alone. During the pandemic, doulas stepped up and developed virtual services and labor support, childbirth education, and breastfeeding support. Doulas also volunteered on virtual hotlines, harvested breastmilk when there was a formula shortage, and helped families find resources in the community. Doulas are an intricate part of every existing community they serve in. Another observation: there's a growing trend with obstetricians and resident physicians. Many New York City OBs ban their patients from having doulas because they don't like doulas. They are resident physicians who want to practice on Black and Brown laboring people with no regard to their respect or compassion. New York City lost two major hospitals for labor and delivery departments over the years, and as a result, the remaining hospitals are flooded with conveyor belt-like services in the labor and delivery departments where families are waiting in the lobby for a bed like an airport on standby. Columbia Presbyterian, 165th Street, has a very different approach to their patient care. My client saw a group of physicians in her prenatal care for 10 months, only to go across the street to the hospital and encounter a completely different group of physicians where she gave birth with the second group she has never met before, never had a rapport with, and therefore, her birth experience was greatly compromised. Not to mention, many of the New York City hospitals are teaching hospitals. Therefore, they expect Black and Brown patients to be very amenable to students, practicing on them without question or hesitation, and this is wrong. They also expect Black and Brown birthing people to allow spectators into their private birth experience to observe like it's a hockey game. It is time for hospitals to own up and acknowledge they are for profit. In fact, New York City hospitals in the past five years have experienced several Black women who were pregnant die of childbirth or postpartum complications. And by the way, those women were not on Medicaid. They were not Medicaid recipients. It is time to hold hospitals accountable to contribute to having freestanding birth centers and ambulatory care settings adjacent to hospitals, as well as to contribute to the cost of having doulas on payroll at hospitals. Doulas are not a luxury. They are a necessity for Black and Brown births. Just ask the women who are no longer with us, and ask those women who have horrible, traumatic experiences, I'm one of them, of how they barely made it alive through the birth of their children. New York State has a moniker of being a dangerous place for Black and Brown women to give birth. I cannot tell you how many times per day I answer my phone on doula inquiries where the person on the other end starts the conversation by saying, "I'm Black, I'm pregnant, and I don't want to die." Why can't New York City hospitals do billing for doulas who accept Medicaid at those hospitals? It would alleviate so much bureaucracy and cost, as the hospital already has an established billing system. If hospitals accept Medicaid and doulas also accept Medicaid, the hospitals should be ready and able to process the billing for doulas that are providing support at those facilities. It is time to have doula provide childbirth education, as well as lactation support, that would free up registered nurses to do their clinical tasks and responsibilities. I've never been able to understand why there's such a chokehold on why registered nurses are to teach childbirth education and provide breastfeeding education and support when there are trained doulas who are more than capable. I, myself, am on track to become an IBCLC this year, and I hope to work in the hospital. It is time to allow, also allow, doulas into operating rooms to support surgical births. I'm really proud to be the owner and facilitator of a new organization, Black Women Do VBAC. I will be providing intensive eight-hour training to birthwork professionals who want better, who want to better support Black and Brown women who are facing surgical births and facing vaginal births after C-section, which is called a VBAC. The training and successful completion of the participants will be endorsed, not certified, endorsed, on the Black Women Do VBAC website directory, where families can find these trained professionals to support and empower their birth experiences. Doulas are the pulse of the community. We know where the bones are buried. We know the racist physicians, nurses, and other staff members. We know the hospitals who say they're baby-friendly, but they do not practice baby-friendly competencies. We know the doctors who are dangerous and commit obstetric violence. We know the nurses who are not kind. Doulas know what hospitals, birth centers, and facilities are doing wrong and what they are doing right. I'm suggesting New York State host an annual doula meeting of two days, where doulas from the entire state come together to learn, share, grow, and unify the doula practice and profession, as opposed to remaining in the current silos. I propose New York State host this gathering to find out the most pressing issues, as well as the opportunity to learn and understand how to dismantle maternal health disparities and to grow the doula profession. I envision this two-day event to be filled with workshops, committees, and caucus. I also propose New York State Department of Corrections to put doulas on their budget line for those who are pregnant and incarcerated. Um, oh, okay.
Yes, please skip to the end there.
Lastly, I would like to share with you briefly my genetic inheritance. Unlike my white counterparts, my generic inheritance is not wealth, real estate, or nepotism. It goes like this: 58 years ago...
I'll have to, just because we have, we have the written testimony...
Oh!
And you already are over the 10 minutes, but if the written testimony is on the record, and we'll actually, and I'll actually ask you, I'm going to ask you some questions afterwards because I want to follow up on some of the stuff that you said, but Senator Brooke first, three minutes.
I had questions, but I just have to say, mic drop. There's nothing left to say. I think that this panel really highlighted what the realities for our doulas are and why we are fighting for equitable reimbursement, so I'll just leave it there. So, thank you all so much.
Thank you.
Senator Salazar.
Thank you. So, actually, I wanted to first ask Denise Bolds to elaborate, if you don't mind, on the information that you offered regarding CPT and ICD-9 codes.
Long, long, well, I just spoke to an elder doula, who's actually very elder, more elder than I am, and she was able to give me some history. Long ago, Dona International had a committee on doula reimbursement through insurances. They did an investigation and found out that it was ACOG who basically put a stop to the facilitation of giving out codes for doula care and services, because at the time, there was not a uniformed training across the nation, and there was not a uniformed policy, code of ethics, and procedure of practice. So, ACOG basically put a halt on why we do not have ICD-9 and procedure codes. That's in the history of what was happening in the past. So, to this day, doulas still don't have those codes because we have over 270 different types of doula organizations that are certifying, and it is not a uniform situation, and many of them do not have code of ethics nor standards of practice.
And actually, would you advocate for there to be a uniform training at the national level, or alternatively, that, that doulas simply have access to, sorry, to these codes, regardless of, of, you know, the reasons that ACOG or anyone else would exclude them?
My vision is really clear. I would love to see codes, because that way would be easier for doulas to be able to participate in insurance reimbursement. Secondly, I would love to see every single doula organization that is to be certified or endorsed, I hate the word certified, to be honest with you, but to be endorsed. I would like to see each doula organization put on their webpage exactly what their criterias are, what their standards of practice, their code of ethics, their training syllabus, as well as a census count of how many Black, Brown, LGBTQI, whatever census they have of their membership. All of that information needs to be transparent on a public platform for everyone to be able to see, and that would create more uniformity across the board.
Thanks, and with very little time left, I would be remiss if I didn't ask this. As the Chair of the Crime and Corrections Committee, you mentioned advocating for a budget line for people who are pregnant while incarcerated. Could you just elaborate a little bit more about why that's important?
That's very important, because unfortunately, you know, there was laws back in the day here in New York where pregnant people were laboring shackled to a bed. And to this day, it is still a very costly, mental, physical, emotional situation for a pregnant person to give birth while incarcerated. They do not receive adequate prenatal care, they do not receive adequate follow-up care, they do not receive hope that they can have a safe pregnancy and that their families can be cared for.
Thank you.
Senator Whitaker.
Thank you, just to echo the sentiments of Senator Brooke. I have one question, is a question I raised with Panel One. What are the mechanisms that you all have or are aware of with regards to when these incidences of discrimination or bias occur? What recourse do doulas have? Like, what is the reporting process?
None.
Okay.
Very little.
Whisper networks in the community, like, we speak to our clients about it, we speak to each other about it, but as far as anyone listening to us in a medical system, there is zero accountability.
That's not always been my experience, so I can't say that you can speak for me on that. What I do know is the fact that it's important for doulas to get good relationships with physicians and with leadership in hospitals, because I've been able to establish very good relationships with several hospital leaders. So, now, when there is a problem, I've got their number in my phone. I could make those calls, but those are very individualized stories.
Yeah, that seems very individual. Doesn't it deal with the institution or the system?
It's not a national broadsheet. However, the IRTH app, she does have a way to capture this information by state, by facility, by provider, in hopes of giving it back to them in their faces and saying, "This is, this is the incidences right here in Black and White," so hopefully, that can be more transparent. I would like to see that as part of J Coast Hospital Review, to be perfectly honest with you, coming down from the state as a requirement.
Thank you.
I would like to, and I agree, some...
I would like to—and I agree, some of with Denise. One of the hospital systems in Buffalo that I work very closely with, myself and the other—some other administrators on that hospital board have put together a doula policy for that hospital system, which does include that information that if there is an incident, these are the steps in which the doula does need to report to the hospital, and then the doula and whomever else from the hospital staff that was involved in the incident would be set down, in a sense, kind of have a meeting that's held to kind of go over what occurred and how to resolve it. But that's just that particular hospital system, but it's not across the state or across the county.
It's not across the border.
Not across county.
It's—a—it's a mark of shame for families, because this has happened to them, so they want to keep quiet, because they just don't want to relive it over and over again, so it's a mark of shame. Doulas interface and intercept a lot of the racism, bias, and passive aggression, to the point that it affects our health. I cannot tell you, as a Black doula, how much I interface for my Black families with the racism that goes on in that labor and delivery room. Everything from calling the husband "baby daddy" to calling the mother "hey mama," and not addressing her by her formal name—for 32 hours.
And it's not just Black and Brown doulas—we often—Black and Brown birthing people. I do a lot of work with teens. Young moms get so much bias and so much judgment, and as a doula, I really work hard to intercept some of that and help them be better at just dealing with our young people.
Thank you.
Actually, it's—it's—that's kind of the direction that I wanted to follow up in. First of all, I'm sorry for cutting you off earlier, just want to make sure that we keep—that that we, you know, make sure that we care everybody and keep things moving, but obviously, the story that you tell is a story of how your mother had a problematic—
She had an unassisted birth at Harlem Hospital for two birculosis, which was the then pandemic at the time.
And then 26 years later, you had your own.
And 26 years later, I had my own traumatic birth. So, that's my genetic inheritance.
And so, the—the one thing I wanted to ask, and you kind of answered this already, but it is—it is—I guess there is—there is an experience that is mixed, depending on if there are folks who are—who have been working somewhere long enough or lucky enough to be able to meet certain people as leadership at a hospital. I guess—is it—is it the experience of folks—and I guess other folks are going to speak in the next two panels—about the experiences that you've had in different hospitals across the state, where this is kind of—if there's no standard, and it kind of just depends on a situation by situation?
For—for us, here in Albany, we have been in talks with the two local hospitals—well, three local hospitals, and the leadership feels open, but we're not absolutely certain that, you know, that it'll be implemented in a way that is respectful, in a way that is useful, in a way that makes our birthing families feel very comfortable in a situation when they're there having babies.
Yeah, that's why I included the Black Birth Bill of Rights from NAB, the National Association to Advance Black Birth. It's been attached in your—in your packet for me.
I don't have it in mine, but I certainly would want to—
You can have this copy.
No worries. I'll get it lit, no worries.
Yeah, but it's—it's wonderful, it's great, it's—you know, I think hospitals really need to incorporate—it's much more diverse, and the Patients' Bill of Rights is just basically on the wall, because aesthetically, it looks good, but no one's really practicing it. Every July, when those residents come through, we're dealing with—you know, we want to practice, we want to practice, we want to play doctor, and they do that on Black and Brown bodies at these teaching hospitals here in New York, and there's a lot of pushback that doulas have to do to defend our families.
And you did—one thing that you said is that you felt—and I want to make sure that—I get this also on the record and be clear about it—you said that you felt that there was a process that should be—that—that setting these standards should be included in the process for each hospital, in what—in what regard? Because you said there was a—guess, a permitting—the—the certificate of need process you were referring to?
The—the process of of what? Of what—of watching?
No, I—I guess this is—you said something earlier related to what you felt needed to be done in every single hospital, and that—and that you felt that there was a standard that should be set by the state in one of the processes that we request—that—that we require of each medical institution, and what was that?
That is using with JCO, and also, if you're going to have doula—if you're going to have baby-friendly designations coming down through the state, you should also attach a doula component to that baby-friendly. Make it simple, just put another line on there saying, "Hey, are you doula-friendly?" and—and have a couple of stipulations with that.
Gotcha.
But JCO also needs to be—that's the Joint Hospital Review Commission. They need to also have this entire component be part of their review, because sadly, it's not, and sadly, that's where a lot of bias and a lot of miscompetencies happen.
Gotcha. I will take that from you now.
Sir, yes.
Thank you so much for being part of this here and today. Move on to our next—thank you so much, Matt. We'll move on to our next panel. Astaire Bay, co-director of the Village Birth International and co-founder of Sankofa Reproductive Health and Healing Centers. Caitlin McGraes. Caitlin McGraes, and I hope I'm pronouncing that correctly, founder and CEO of Be Her Village. And Phyllis Sharp, founder of Royalty Birth Services. Yes, because I'm sure you folks know who you are. Flip it around, so I know. I appreciate it. All right, we're going to start with Astaire.
Astir.
Astir.
Yes, good job.
So, we'll start there, and then we'll go this way. 10 minutes. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, and thank you for this opportunity to testify today. My name is Astir Bay. I'm the co-director for Village Birth International and the co-founder for the Sankofa Reproductive Health and Healing Center. Before I get into the specifics of my testimony today, I just want to talk about the state of reproductive injustice families are experiencing, whose those families are, and why community-based doula care needs to be central to this conversation of doula Medicaid reimbursement. I also want to acknowledge and recognize the people and communities, particularly the Black birthing folks and their caregivers known as community-based doulas, who are not here today. We must uplift the models of training, doula engagement, and reimbursement structures that reflect their work. Too often, these community doulas and their expertise gets marginalized. All of them are working in their own communities. Many of them are experiencing the same reproductive injustice as the families they work with. They see their clients at the doula appointments, but they also see them at the church, at the grocery store, at cookouts, or neighborhood events. These are Black women like myself who have seen up close the ways in which preventable death and illness unfold in pregnancy and leave entire communities paralyzed. Our work is not housed in hospital-affiliated centers, health departments, or heavily-funded nonprofit organizations. Our work is in collective spaces, donated offices, libraries, and sometimes even our own homes. These formal and informal collectives do not receive government funding or state allocated grants, because traditionally, those reimbursement sources have minimized the scope of our work while creating barriers and overburdened some paperwork and red tape in reimbursement. We have an opportunity to do better this time. Medicaid legislation must allow for doulas to practice their profession within the scope and standard of care that makes this model successful. This includes providing community-based organizations with the necessary administrative support that builds the infrastructure for billing and reporting, so that doulas can be doulas, not billers. This creates the sustainability, the protection for families, and the equitable payment structures we need. Again, we must be sensitive to the fact that community-based doula organizations traditionally do not receive federal or state funding. There must be thoughtful and ongoing collaboration to match community-based doula services and reimbursement structures that support our work and not burden it. I know that there are other community-based doulas who wanted to be here today and submit testimony, but they could not, because they have their own families and clients to care for, they're working side jobs to supplement their community-based doula care, or some of them were on-call and could not commit the time. Some of the Black community-based doulas in my area and across the state have actually walked away from this process, because new legislation continues to exclude our experience and the needs of families. I am here today for them. We have talked about the—the state of maternal mortality in New York State. This is a problem across the state, but also in Anadaga County, where our maternal mortality rate is over 85% higher than the national rate. Hospital-based reproductive health care is the only choice for most Black Latinx and Indigenous families. Birth centers, home births, and private reproductive choice is largely unavailable in Anadaga County, where I'm from. Over 85% of the children in Syracuse City School District qualify for free lunch, and about 40% of Syracuse City residents are Medicaid insured. I just wanted to start from there, so that when we're talking about policy, once again, we are centering people. At Village Birth International, we have also trained, mentored, and supported community-based doulas since 2012. As a collective, we serve families on the south side of Syracuse for Black Latinx Indigenous families, and on the north side of Syracuse for African and refugee and immigrant families. Our collective of community-based doulas created the Sankofa Reproductive Health and Healing Center, and we are birth workers serving in our own community. Community-based doula care centers those most at risk for death and illness and mistreatment in birth. At Sankofa, community-based doula care is family care. This is not an entrepreneurial model. We would not be what you would call a traditional doula model of care. Community-based doula care is responsive to the whole birth experience. It is not an individual outreach. Collectivity ensures that everyone benefits, and no one, not even the doula, is left without support. Most of our families receive Medicaid, some are underinsured, some are uninsured, others are undocumented. All of them are facing the full range of racial and gender-based inequality in healthcare and throughout their daily lives. We must implement this kind of community-based doula care at the state level. Current legislation seeking to register and regulate doulas does not speak to the ways that families engage and connect with community-based doulas in our area. Regulation and registration of individual doulas is also a barrier, especially for our doulas who speak English as a second language, and is also a deterrent for communities prioritizing safety when historically, state surveillance is actually experienced as criminalization. At Sankofa, doulas offer weekly appointment hours for essential items like doula—like diapers and for families. These are trusted communal spaces of care. People share their hopes and dreams for pregnancy and parenting, and we are able to witness and support families organically. Many of our referrals from doula care come from these spaces. Recently, we had a mother show up to get essential items, and we noticed that she was not well. We discovered that not only was she pregnant, but she had multiple comorbidities, housing issues, and a whole list of reproductive health concerns that had not been addressed, despite being fully connected to the local agencies and healthcare systems. We were able to offer her full community-based doula care and connection to the resources she needed. Local organizations and hospitals refer to us because we are known and trusted by the people who are most likely to be marginalized. Most of our families are not looking for doula care online. They are not Googling us. They find us because we exist where they are. We must have a broader understanding of the ways doula care exists and what it can look like under state Medicaid systems. Families also come to community-based doula care at different points of their pregnancy and parenting journey. This timeline matters. Some families only need prenatal support. Others are looking for a birth doula, because they don't have childcare, they have working partners, or they have families out of town. Some people just need postpartum care. Perhaps they didn't even know that community-based doula care existed until they went to the hospital and came home with unexpected complications. Others are experiencing miscarriage, stillbirth, or decide late to terminate their pregnancy, and will go home to experience the physical, physiological, and emotional realities of postpartum, but the loss of not having a child. Community-based doulas serve in those spaces too. Medicaid reimbursement must account for all the ways doula services are delivered. That means reimbursement structures that support all doula engagements, not just birth. So much of the legislation over the last few years—is a copy of the requirements and programmatic efforts outlined in the 2018 New York State pilot program. Community-based doulas across the state rejected this legislation. Since then, most of us have felt like we were on the defensive, responding to individual bills that pop up while not being fully engaged or listened to in their creation. Current proposed requirements for doulas do not meet—we actually have essential core competencies and standards of care for doulas serving families with complex needs. In an effort to create state-led certification models, the project—the pilot project lacked the specific standards of care, hours of training, mentorship models, and ongoing support needed for families to be in community and sustain their practice. Community-based doulas are successfully training and supporting doulas across the state. We've done it for over 10 years. 50 hours of in-person education, mentorship, supportive care, and orientation to collective engagement. Again, we need to broaden this discussion and center these requirements for individuals who wish to serve our families. Lastly, I would just like to acknowledge Senator Brooke's effort to create a working group in the New York State Bill 8967. This—this bill proposes a statewide doula advisory board for this legislation. It is our hope that New York State med—excuse me, New York State doula Medicaid legislation can start from here, including creation and implementation. While there's been a lot of feedback from individual doulas and coalitions across the state, we are still missing pieces to this puzzle. Centering families and doulas with the greatest risk to reproductive injustice will ensure better outcomes for everyone. I'm here today asking for direct and sustainable collaboration. It is our hope that in central New York, that creating and implementing policy together can reflect these models that improve outcomes while uplifting a workforce of community-based doulas. Thank you for this opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Sharp?
Yes. Hi, thank you for having me today. My name is Phyllis Sharp. I'm a certified doula, postpartum doula, and a birth doula. I'm also a certified lactation counselor and a childbirth educator. I've served the Rochester, New York area, and I've been a doula for the past four years, and I've served over 175 families of all nationalities. My goal is to educate, support, and empower every birthing person throughout their pregnancy, labor, birth, and postpartum period. Doulas have been around for a very long time, but until recent years, because of COVID-19 and the rise in maternal and fetal mortality rates, doulas have become a necessary part of the care of the birthing persons. The mortality rate should not be overlooked or ignored, especially when women and babies are dying at an alarming rate. The United States has the highest mortality rate of the developed world, and New York State is no exception. Birthing persons of color are at higher risk. Black women are three to four times more likely than non-Hispanic white women to die in New York State due to childbirth-related causes. One way to alleviate these disparities is increased accessibility to doula support through Medicaid reimbursement. This is important for all birthing persons, but especially Black birthing persons, should be a part of this health equity solution. Doulas provide physical and emotional support, partner support, as well as education about pregnancy, labor, and birth, and the postpartum period. Why should this service only be available to people who can afford it? And the people who need it the most are left with little to no support or education. People of color report lower satisfaction than white people regarding communication with medical providers. Doulas act as a liaison, using their experience with childbirth to increase the quality of communication between providers and birthing persons. Additionally, doulas can assist in care navigation, promote health literacy, and provide culturally competent social support, all contributing to better birth—better health outcomes. I had a client who delivered her baby, and a few days later, after she was home, I went to check on her. Asked how she was doing, and she said she was doing fine, but noticed that her sight wasn't as sharp, and mentioned she thought she needed new glasses. I was a little concerned, and asked if she had a blood pressure cuff. She did, she had one at home, and we checked her blood pressure, and it was well over the range, and I had her call her doctor. She was read—readmitted to the hospital for high blood pressure. Mothers aren't due back to see their healthcare providers for six weeks after birth. Doulas save lives. I was in the OR with a client who had a planned C-section, and Dad wanted me to check on the baby before he came over to see her. I walked over to check on the baby, and she was blue and not breathing. The nurse was right there and didn't notice. I calmly told her that the baby was not breathing, she's blue, and started rubbing the baby's back to get her to breathe. Doulas save lives. I had a client in the hospital for an induction, and after a few days, as her labor progress—process was slow, her doctor was pressuring her to have a C-section, stating failure to progress. I was there to educate her and to help her ask questions regarding induction, and she realized that this was her choice. She decided to continue with the induction and had the vaginal birth that she wanted. Doulas educate, advocate, and we also empower. My client was having trouble navigating her— My client was having trouble navigating her postpartum journey. She felt tired, alone, and unable to cope with all the newness that comes with having a new baby. She told me she was frustrated that breastfeeding wasn't going as planned. Her birth didn't go as she had planned. Nothing seemed to be going her way. We would talk almost every day, and even though her husband and her mother was with, was there to help her, she felt all the burden was on her shoulders. I asked her how she was feeling, and she just said, "I'm sad. I wish I had not had had a baby." I asked her to call her doctor to make an appointment because I felt she had postpartum depression. Also followed up with her husband to make sure that he was doing okay and to get them the help that they needed. This client got on meds and found a great counselor to help her navigate through her, the depression. Four months later, she's talking about having a second child and how she didn't want to return to work but to stay home with her baby, a total turnaround. Doula support and help find resources for families. Doulas should be able to do this for everyone, but especially those who are Medicaid, who cannot afford it. The New York Coalition for Doula Access has proposed an equitable Medicaid reimbursement program, and it should be considered for this year's budget so that doula's ca- care can be increased in underserved communities. Let's show, [sighs] lost in tears, let's show the people of New York that we care. All right? We care about their lives, their lives are valued, their children's lives are valued. Doulas are here to empower families, to educate families, to make informed decisions regarding their care. This is a crisis, and there are proven ways that we can help prevent these disparities. We need everyone to have access to doula care. With a doula by your side, your labor's shorter, fifteen percent increase in having a vaginal birth, increased breastfeeding rates, thirty-one percent less likely to need betocin, ten percent like, less likely to need pain medication, thirty-nine percent less likely to have a cesarean birth, thirty-four more, thirty-four percent more likely to rate their birth experience as a positive one. Just want to thank you for allowing me to speak today.
Thank you, Ms. Sharp. Ms. McRaeus?
McRaeus.
McGraeus.
It's McGrath plus Reyes. We combined our last names. A little Irish, a little Honduran in there.
It's actually pretty dope, actually. McGraeus.
Yeah. Thank you so much for the opportunity to testify today on how to examine and identify best practices for integrating doulas into the medical system. My name is Caitlin McGraeus. I am a mother of three children. I have given birth three times in New York State. I had an unplanned cesarean, one would call it a standard American maternal healthcare experience, in a New York City hospital. I went on to have a VBAC in Nassau County Hospital, OB-supported, and in two thousand and sixteen had a midwife-supported home birth, planned home birth. I became a doula in two thousand and fourteen. After my second baby was born, I practiced as a solo doula for a couple of years and then formed partnership and eventually built out a doula team with a full practice and included full-spectrum care with prenatal workshops, postpartum workshops, and support. We also developed and ran a doula mentorship program. I then attended, I believe it was in two thousand and seventeen, a, in Nassau County, a Birth Justice Warrior Breakfast put on by Dr. Martine Hackett from Hofstra, and I became aware of my white privilege. I was astounded by what I had thought was a faraway New York City problem. I hate to say it, but that was the truth. It felt far away for me as a white, middle-class person in Nassau County, and I was schooled on just how close to home Black maternal mortality rates were and just how, just how inequitable this system was, right where I was living and serving. And when I became aware of that, I was called into thinking about how to increase doula access because I was, at that time, my rates were twenty-eight hundred dollars and up. I was one of the more expensive doulas on Long Island, but that was the rate for someone to access my team. And I just, in that one breakfast, started to understand that is not sustainable and that is not how, how I want to spend my time on this earth, quite frankly. I looked at the retail industry, and I founded a, a baby gift registry platform called Be Her Village in an attempt to redirect the twelve billion dollars spent each year on baby gifts in this country towards maternal healthcare dollars. So, so far, we've had a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollars funded, over a thousand gifts, and we're making progress there. We've also cultivated thirteen hundred birth workers, a network of birth workers across the country, and many of them are doulas working on the front line. I'm extremely supportive of doulas being reimbursed at a fair rate, and I'd like to spend my time with this testimony, talking about some of the lived experience and insight as a doula's of what goes into those reimbursement rates and running a doula business. Number one, I think that we need to talk about call time. Doulas are often on call for their clients twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year. It is, it, we have to drop out of our life, we've had Christine spoke about it, but it is an incredible burden, and it's an incredible burden especially for people that have children themselves, and that is most of us. Most of us are working mothers. I was a primary caregiver for the entirety of my time as a doula, and I had layers and layers and layers of childcare. The call time needs to be taken into consideration. Doulas are often on call for at least two weeks before and after a due date, but that's at a minimum. Many of us are on call the second that we sign a contract with a client. There are two contributing factors. One might ask, well, why are doulas on call endlessly? So I'd like to point out two factors to that. One is that popular doula training programs, including Dona International, where I trained, encourage solo doula work. They are telling doulas to create business models where primary doulas are on call and they enlist a backup doula if necessary. This is a system that most doulas in our state are using. There are, there are definitely models of care that have been explored. My model was one of the first on Long Island to introduce team care, and I have to say, one of, the second point of why this model exists is because as soon as the pandemic started, before schools were shut down, doulas were absolutely banned from the hospitals. We were labeled as visitors. It was a slap in the face for all of us who have done this work, lobbying and, and making those connections and trying to make this change and advocate for our clients at every level in the medical system to suddenly be called visitors. And those policies have not been rolled back. There is no designation for doulas that is separate from guests. And it is incredibly problematic, and it is limiting when we start thinking about how we can scale up, because what you guys are talking about here is not just reimbursement, although it's incredibly important. You're talking about scaling up an entire industry. It's extremely exciting, but we have to think about how we can do that in a way that works. And what we have to do is pull in the hospitals and make sure that they are allowing for different business models, allowing for doulas to switch out, allowing for them to have call times. Current policies that were implemented in the absolute chaos that was early March of two thousand and twenty have absolutely not been examined and have to be looked at in the context of this work. Okay, so continuous care, one of the things that also needs to be considered as we're talking about doulas is that we are providing this continuous care in our current model. But regardless of whether it's one person or a few doulas switching in and out, we are with birthing people for longer than any other medical providers that they're coming into contact with. We are joining them in their homes. We are going with them in the hospital. We are staying with them throughout the entirety of their births and in the postpartum time. And part of the way, this is like the elephant in the room, part of the way that doulas are effective, we're not doing cervical exams, we're not doing IVs, we're not making recommendations, we're keeping them out of the hospital. We're keeping them out of the hospital, and we need to understand that in order to do that, there is an incredible burden of the amount of hours. I, after my third baby was born, I was going into births and leaving bags of breast milk and donated breast milk and just saying, "Okay, I'll see you in a day, maybe, or two days." It's, it's an incredible burden that doulas take on, and we need to make sure the reimbursement rate is high enough that we can imagine new business models that will support sustainable doula work so that the people that, it's, you know, some, some of us are talking about how mothers could access doulas and birthing people can ac- access doulas. We also need to talk about how we can access doula support, how we can access the doula profession, and that reimbursement rate and those hospital policies are going to be critical in thinking about that. Okay. I want to talk about, a little bit about what goes into running a doula business. We're working within a for-profit healthcare system, unfortunately, which means that we must create a business model that is efficient and incentivizes doulas properly. Here are a few costs, we'll try to run through them quickly. Training and education materials, time spent with pers- prospective clients, prenatal support, time spent on call, time spent at births, time spent providing postpartum support, time for recovery for ourselves, which is something I did not do, and I made that mistake, childcare costs, parking and transport, liability insurance, ongoing education and professional development, social media and marketing, office-based website costs, accounting and legal fees, professional organizations. Lastly, I would like to say that, right now, individual doulas are on the front line, and they are working with people who need their care. And we're often putting ourselves at economic risk in order to take somebody else out of health risk. And while I completely and utterly support the work that you are doing, and I cannot tell you how moved I am that someone with lived experiences in this position of power right in front of me, I have chills just being in this room today, we are a band-aid. Doulas are a low-hanging fruit. Get us the reimbursement, get us in the room, save, save the lives now, but we are not the ones killing women. We are not the ones that created this problem in the first place. So we need to take off that burden, we need to take the burden of the system off of the shoulders of individual doulas, we need to empower them to go do the work, and then we need to refocus on countering the powerful lobbies of ACOG and other physician groups. Thank you so much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Senator Brooke?
Wow. This was a really moving panel, so thank you all. And, you know, you each had very specific, while there were overarching themes, you had very specific approaches to making sure that we're fully understanding your perspective. So I have literally a million questions, but if I do this right, I can manage to pick up my baby in an hour when I'm supposed to get her from daycare. So I'm gonna, you know, Phyllis, I want to start with you because you also had me in tears listening to some of those stories, and I think it would be a great time to, if you can ballpark it, any idea, the range of hours that you spend on one birthing person, all in? Can you even fathom the number of hours?
I, I can't, really. It's a lot.
Have you ever said no to a, one of your clients calling or texting you? Have you ever not picked up?
Never.
Never?
In the middle of the night. It doesn't, it doesn't matter. You know, my business, I'm on call from the time they sign the contract, so, and I prefer it that way. I'd, I'd rather they have access to me whenever they need or feel that they need someone to reassure them. And so it could be two o'clock in the morning, it could be two o'clock in the afternoon. I am, in one way, fortunate because my children, I have five children, and they are all adults. I have nine grandchildren, so I'm available in that way, and so that's why I prefer it. I think if I was like her and had the smaller children, it would be a little bit different. But I prefer it that way. I, I, I'm really, what's the word? I'm really bought in with my clients. Like, I am with them tooth and nail, through every single thing, through whatever they're going through, through whatever, whatever they need, changing doctors, we talk about that. We talk about if someone's not, if their partner is not, they feel like their partner's not pulling their weight. We talk about that, like, how can they get help? How can they get help if they're being abused in their relationship? We talk about all of those different things. And so we, we do so much as doulas. I think that a lot of people don't understand, like, what we actually do. And it goes way beyond just being at that birth and being there to support them. It goes way beyond that, you know? I, I, I talk to my clients, will call me a year later and say, "Phyllis, you know, how can I get this baby off my boob?" Because I'm like, "Girl, you know how long it took us to get that baby on the boob?"
This is insider doula humor.
Yeah, so, so, you know, it's, it's really, it's really, it's a very rewarding job. It's the most rewarding job that I, that I've ever, ever had. And I've worked in hospitals, and it's been my greatest honor to serve people in my community and the, in, in this industry. It is like so rewarding, and I feel like we should be compensated for it, and the people who need it the most should have access. More than anything in the world, these people are suffering, things are happening to them that they have, they feel like they have no control over, and to be able to-
Thank you, Phyllis. Sorry. I hit, yeah, we hit the zero minute.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Because I do want to just end here that you all have described how passionate you are about this work, you're committed to this work, but I'll say what I said in our mental health budget hearing, that passion doesn't pay the bills. You can be committed to this work, but you deserve the support and you deserve the reimbursement to have dignified wages for yourself. So thank you, all three of you.
Thank you.
I'll pass Senator Salazar in a second, but just to say quickly, I could not agree with you more, Ms. McGraeus, about the for-profit healthcare system that we have and so many of the choices that are being made have to do with that. And I very much, I, I'm, this is a reason why I'm working on the New York Health Act, which would actually include doulas as a covered service. And, and I'll also, just one quick question from the past panel, it, it's, is it safe to say that the same or similar experiences that the ones that were described by the last panel, you have felt in different hospitals in the, in the, in the amount of work that you've done?
Absolutely.
And you would also agree that, that it would, that it should be, that there's a standard that should be set by the state as far as the inclusion of doulas is, as far as being given access to the, to, to, to the, to the hospital, et cetera? Is, is there anything briefly that you think we might want to add on top of what was discussed before, as far as the standards that should be set?
I think ensuring the patients' access to doulas, they're paying money out of pocket or they're gonna have reimbursement, but I think we have evidence that as soon as, you know, as soon as things got tough, doulas were essentially tossed to the curb, and we need to make sure that we are viewed as part of the life-saving care and part of that impactful advocacy team and that we have access to our clients.
I also think the accountability piece is really big, because we have baby-friendly hospitals, we have hospitals who have policy, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they're following that policy. And so, you know, a lot of times, community-based doulas become edu- maternal health educators because we spend a lot of time engaging with the hospital, and we may have certain physicians or whoever on speed dial, but there really is no accountability, even when you have state designation. I mean, I've been on some of those perinatal equity calls and, you know, the, the New York State Birth Equity, and it seems like more of the same, I have to say, honestly, because there's, there is no accountability, there is no real collaboration with communities. We, we are, we were able to have a little bit more dialogue and exchange and kind of help change some of our policies with one hospital, but it seems to be just more placating, to be honest, and no accountability.
And in Rochester, New York, it's gotten a lot better. It's, my clients can have a doula and their twenty-four-hour support person, and then they can have their visitors. So we're separate at most of the hospitals in Rochester. We have been working with a couple of the other hospitals to make sure it's the same, but doulas have twenty-four-hour access to their clients when they're in the hospital, even during postpartum.
Got you. Thank you all. Senator Salazar?
Sure. Um.
Digga. Keep going, keep going, digga.
Um, we're close enough, anyway. So actually, I'm just so impressed by, by all three of you and grateful for the knowledge that you've shared with us. I don't really have a question because at the beginning, you know, this has really been a well-rounded panel in the sense that at the beginning of, of your testimony, Astir, you know, you mentioned that, that not even the doula is left without support. And Ms. McGraeus, you, you mentioned that, you know, you really spoke comprehensively to the needs of, of doulas and, and needs that must be met. So I really appreciate all three of you and the work that you do. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all for joining us today. Now, last but certainly not least, Panel Five, we will be joined by Nikia Lawson, past president of Dona International, Carol Tigas, executive director of Finger Lakes Performing Provider System, Dr. Elizabeth Warner, chief medical officer for CDPHP, and Yuki Davis, manager of policy and advocacy at Every Mother Counts.
I'm here. Thank you.
You'll have the last one.
I'm delighted. Thanks, sir.
Almost there.
Yeah. I'm still in the last minute. Oh, you're done.
All right. Thank you so much. We'll start over. Steve, just go that way. Ten minutes.
Great. Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you so much for having us today for this testimony, and thank you to the fellow leaders and community members from across the state for your commitment to a better healthcare system for everyone. My name is Carol Tigas, executive director of Finger Lakes Performing Provider System, also known as FLIPs. I noticed that everybody was commenting on their own experiences. As a white woman, I am very lucky to be sitting here because I had two- the way to go in 1990, 1994, emergency C-section, 1998, a VBAC that was rather forced and with force-ups. It should have been a, a C-section. If I were black or brown, I probably would not be sitting here, and that is very, very troubling to me. FLIPs is a network of clinical and community-based provider organizations working together in the 13-county Finger Lakes region. Our mission is to transform and improve the healthcare delivery system for the Medicaid population, and we bridge the gap between community and healthcare. We've already heard all the statistics at the national level, which are completely unacceptable. I'm gonna go off a little script, because there have been so many testimonies so far that reference all of those numbers. Alarmingly, this rate continues to grow year after year. This is a public health crisis, not only across the country, but in New York State. The Rochester and Finger Lakes region is no different, and in some cases, even worse. The maternal mortality rate in our region is a staggering 51% higher for black mothers than for white mothers, and infant mortality is 300% higher for black babies than for white babies. There is no question that societal and healthcare system factors contribute to these disproportionately high mortality rates. Stop for a moment. Imagine a young black woman in the city of Rochester, pregnant for the first time, just a few months into her pregnancy. She has a minimum wage-paying job, does not own a vehicle, and cannot take time off from work to make prenatal appointments. On top of that, she's scared to go to a white doctor because she is intimidated and worried that she's not able to make her own decisions about her care or her baby's care. She has heard about the higher rates of C-sections for black women, and even that black women are more likely to die in the hospital. These fears are not unfounded, these are facts. She is isolated, not supported, and afraid to speak up. Now, imagine another young woman, brown, a farm worker in Ontario County, who just found out she's pregnant with her second child. She works here in New York State with a group of migrant farm workers and sends money back home to take care of her family. She does not speak English, and she is not familiar with the area. She's had very limited experience with the healthcare system, and the few experience she has had have not been positive at all. The language barrier and mistrust of the system makes her extremely hesitant to engage in care for her and her baby. These fears are not unfounded, these are facts. She too is isolated, not supported, and afraid to speak up. I hear these stories often from our provider partners. The stories are different, but the themes are the same. There needs to be a change in how we approach maternal-child healthcare in New York State so that we all have the best access to care, best experience, and best outcomes. We have to change how we provide care and how we pay for care. One thing we can change is integrating community-based doulas into care teams. We can dramatically improve black and brown maternal and infant health outcomes in New York State, but doula care will not be available for these families unless the Medicaid rate reimburses for doula services at a rate that will allow community organizations to hire the doulas and for them to be paid a living wage. This is not unrelated to the workforce challenges we have all across the healthcare continuum in, in our region. Doulas provide referrals to community, needed community resources, and continuous emotional and educational support to women during pregnancy, childbirth, and postpartum. They also play a crucial role in combating the discrimination, racism, and loss of autonomy that black, black and brown individuals experience. As trained and certified non-clinical professionals and trusted, trusted members of the community, doulas help improve prenatal care, increase breastfeeding rates, decrease unnecessary medical interventions, increase positive birth experiences, and improve parenting skills. Doulas advocate for pregnant individuals when they can't advocate for themselves and teach them how to advocate for themselves and for their babies. Doula services, as a complement to clinical care, improves maternal and child health outcomes. These efforts, excuse me, this is why I numbered my pages. There we go. How do I know this? In October 2021, FLIPs partnered on a two-year community-based doula program with three organizations: Healthy Baby Network, a community-based organizations in the city of Rochester; Finger Lakes Community Health, a federally qualified health center, FQHC, serving the Finger Lakes region; and Health Connect One, a national leader in doula training, and you heard from Dr. Dillian earlier. The program developed referral pathways like with healthcare systems and FQHCs to facilitate care for birthing individuals of color within the city of Rochester and in the Finger Lakes region. Six FTE doulas, 250 birthing people, is the scope of the project. Utilizing Health Connect One's proven "train the trainer" model, 16 community-based training sessions were offered to doulas employed by Healthy Baby Network and FLCH, the FQHC. What's innovative and truly significant about the model is that training focuses not only on the essential curriculum of the doula training, but also through a lens of cultural competency and trauma-informed care. Health Connect One's community-based doula training model has proven successful because they employ women who are trusted members of the target community, extend and intensify the role of community-based doula with families from early pregnancy through the first month's postpartum, collaborate with community stakeholders and institutions, and use a diverse team approach, facilitate experiential learning using population education techniques and their own curriculum, and value community-based doulas' work with salary and support. The success of the program can be attributed to the doula team's efforts to meet with local OB-GYN providers and frontline workers to educate them on community-based doulas and their vital role in improving, verse number five, outcomes. These efforts increased referral rates into the program and ensured that doulas were welcomed as part of the care team. Healthy Baby Network, which provides community-based support to black and brown families focused on expanding their black doula collaborative, which provides support for community-based doulas. Finger Lakes Community Health focused on their bilingual community health workers and trained them up to access translators also for the families. Best practices were implemented with the standardization of data collection and dashboards to track outcomes. The program results will finish out in fourth quarter '23, but so far, here are some statistics. Stark increase in breastfeeding initiation rates, C-section rates that have fallen below the New York State average. So far, we have 150 participants who have been engaged, almost 80 births so far. After giving birth, a survey is conducted on a scale of 1 to 10. So far, the majority are above 8. Only 17 C-sections, of which 7 were planned, only 7 low birthweight babies, and 75 out of 80 are breastfeeding. Those numbers are substantial. I'll take a moment to have a few quotes. I realize I'm getting, running out of time here. Here's a quote from a birthing mother. "Pam made the whole experience bearable. She advocated for me and asked all the questions that needed to be asked. She made sure I was comfortable with every decision that was made, also made sure I understood. She talked me through every contraction and also suggested things to further along my labor that was not suggested by the doctor." Here's a midwife. "It honestly made me teary to watch the birthing woman, her doula, and her mother work together to bring this healthy little girl into the world. No epidural, no lacerations, ab cars 9.9, healthy baby and jubilant mom." And from a doula, "The training model used is very thorough. I'm blown away by the program and how much it makes, goes into making these doulas are truly prepared to go into the community. I've been a doula for 12 years in this community, and for the longest time, I felt alone. I was not able to financially support clients who were not able to pay. I kept asking, is there a way to support these individuals, these women of color who desperately need doulas? When the evidence shows black women are four times more likely to die during childbirth, they need doulas. The program has made an impact in the hospital systems. We're now invited to staff meetings, tours of the hospitals. They're making plans for the future. What can they do to make the environment better for us? I have not seen this level of engagement." The OB, the American College of OB-GYN and Society for Maternal-Fetal Medicine themselves say, "Doulas are one of the most effective tools to improve labor and delivery outcomes. The continuous presence of doula improves outcomes." Let's go back to the women I mentioned earlier. The young black woman in Rochester, pregnant for the first time. Her doctor introduces her to a community-based doula. The doula is someone who looks like her, has experienced similar healthcare-related discrimination, and even lives in her neighborhood. After speaking with the doula, this is the first time the young mother feels safe, safe in a medical setting. This is how healthcare should be. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tegus.
Thank you. Greetings, state representatives. Senator Bruck, thank you for your invitation. Thank you for the opportunity to provide testimony to the New York State Senate on how to identify and examine best practices for integrating doulas into New York's maternal healthcare system. Allow me to add to the written testimony who I am. I am Nikia Lawson. I am a birth doula for over 27 years, serving hundreds of families to bring their babies earthside safely. I am an international birth doula trainer, having trained over 1,000 doulas in multiple countries. I just want to say thank you to the hashtag #TrainByNikia family. I'm grateful for all their support. I'm also a community childbirth and lactation educator and specialist, and an all-around birth enthusiast. I am mama to two beautiful human beings, and grandmama, I'm ya-ya, to one granddaughter. I currently sit on the board of directors, and I'm the immediate past president and representative of Dona International. Dona International is the only nonprofit, member-owned doula organization delivering evidence-based training, education, and certification worldwide. Founded in 1992, our organization is, and its networks of doulas professionalize the doula role. We have certified over 13,000 doulas and supported over 5,000 members in over 54 countries. Dona International's vision: a doula for every person who wants one. The value of doula care continues to be supported in research and, as such, is being discussed as a critical component to combating, combating the current perinatal health crisis. Dona recognizes the incredible value that doulas bring to their clients' prenatal experiences. Dona recognizes that the doula's role precedes the modern profession and affirms that a birth doula is widely recognized today as a trained professional, advocates and provides continuous physical, emotional, and informational support to their clients before, during, and shortly after childbirth, supports clients to have a safe, dignified, and empowered birth experience. Many states throughout the United States are exploring adding doula services as a value proposition for Medicaid recipients. Providing payment for doula services at a living wage can increase the workforce and make this evidence-based support more readily available to eligible consumers. Encouraging birthing persons to access a doula of their choice will foster relationship development, education, advocacy efforts, and improve overall satisfaction in the birth and postpartum experience. Along with improving health outcomes, the cost savings are notable. One recent study looking at cost-effectiveness found that birthing persons receiving doula support as a Medicaid benefit had lower pre-birth, preterm birth, and cesarean rates compared to other birthing persons in the region. Additionally, cost-saving analysis indicates a potential savings associated with doula support averaging about $986. The footnote is available and is in the written document. Dona International supports the expansion of Medicaid to cover birth and postpartum doula services. Organizations such as the World Health Organization, the Association of Women's Obstetric and Neonatal Nurses, and the American College of Nurse Midwives also released statements supporting doula care and increasing access to doula care in recent years. The current state of perinatal health is dire in the United States. Black people giving birth are three times more likely to die from a pregnancy-related cause than their white counterparts. Multiple factors contribute to this discrepancy, including structural racism and implicit bias, again, footnoted and indicated in the testimony. Dona feels strongly that doulas are one key component to addressing the current crisis. As reported by the Center for Healthcare Statistics, the most effective way to approach outlining the Medicaid benefit for doulas is to invite local, state, and national doula organizations to come together to design the implementation of the Medicaid benefit. Centering the doula increases the likelihood of success in the doula's desire to become Medicaid providers. It also centers the doula's skills and connection to the community that they work in, and ensures the availability of cultural congruent care, again, footnoted and documented. Dona International strongly encourages the state of New York to center the doula in all aspects of developing the Medicaid benefit. The established group must be culturally congruent and include doulas serving populations throughout the state. This group should lead the planning of all aspects of the doula, of the Medicaid benefit, including but not limited to defining the living wage guidelines for prenatal and postpartum visits and support during, and during labor and delivery, establishing the criteria for providing services as a doula, training requirements, education, et cetera, plan for workforce development, increasing the number of qualified doulas to serve the community, design listings and directories advertising doulas that will bill Medicaid for services, develop an evaluation criteria for the Medicaid reimbursement program, plan for a statewide doula campaign to educate providers on the benefits of doulas, and inform the citizens of New York about doulas and as an option for their support team, collaborate with managed care organizations to develop training materials for doulas to navigate the billing process. Dona International appreciates that Senator Bruck and her colleagues value the role of doula support as one way to address this crisis. We look forward to collaborating and supporting these efforts, developing and implementing Medicaid support of doulas and families. Sincerely, Dona International, Board of Directors. Allow me with my last few moments to correct the previous panel speaker who stated that, and I want to correct this testimony, Dona's training model is that of a doula and a backup in comparison to her team approach? That is not an organizational training model. However, independent doulas can establish whatever business model or whatever framework fits their business needs and their community needs. It could be an individual service model, it could be a tandem teamwork service model, or the way she has her setup as a team approach. Again, it's what works for the doula. Thank you again.
Thank you so much. Dr. Warner?
Thank you so much, senators. I really appreciate that you have put this hearing together today. This is such an important topic, and thanks for inviting us to be at the table. My name is Dr. Elizabeth Warner. I'm the chief medical officer at Capital District Physicians Health Plan, more commonly known as CDPHP, right here in Albany, New York. I want to thank you for welcoming CDPHP to participate in today's hearing, to share our experiences and knowledge related to doula services and the reasons why we made the decision to provide reimbursement for these services for our commercial members. For those of you who may not know, CDPHP is a not-for-profit physician-founded health plan serving 400,000 customers in 36 counties throughout New York. CDPHP takes great pride in high-quality care and superior customer service that we've become known for, and we work very hard to ensure that our members have access to the very best healthcare services at the most affordable price. So, why did we decide to start covering the doula benefit for commercial members? CDPHP believes that maternal mortality and morbidity in America is at an unacceptable level, with 2/3 of all maternal deaths deemed preventable. We know that birth and postpartum doulas have been proven to provide benefits that support healthy birth outcomes and long-term health for the whole family, which is why we decided to consider offering this as a benefit. Here's what we found. You've probably heard these numbers already from other people here, but I'll repeat them. With continuous support from a doula, we see women experiencing the following positive birth outcomes, including a 39% decrease in risk of cesarean births, 22% decrease in the risk of preterm birth, a 60% reduction in request for an epidural, patients are four times less likely to have a low birthweight baby, and twice less, two times less likely to experience a birth complication. Additionally, studies have found that individuals with continuous support from a doula are more likely to experience positive long-term health outcomes, such as increased likelihood of breastfeeding, advanced maternal health equity, reduced racial disparities, and lower odds of postpartum anxiety and depression. Doula services are supported and recommended by leading experts in the field of maternal health, such as the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, the American College of Nurse Midwives, the World Health Organization, the Society for Maternal and Fetal Medicine, and the March of Dimes. Finally, doula services support our health plan's quality goals, as well as our mission of providing, providing our members with comprehensive benefits designed to keep them healthy. The way the benefit works is that, starting in January of 2023, our eligible CDPHP commercial members, covered spouses and their dependents, can be reimbursed up to $1,500 for out-of-pocket costs related to in-person or virtual doula services provided by a certified and/or trained doula. Doula services eligible for this benefit can be provided before pregnancy, during pregnancy, and in the postpartum period. And examples of those services eligible include prenatal education classes, pregnancy support, childbirth support, and postpartum support. In summary, CDPHP is proud to be the only health plan- doula. Doula services eligible for this benefit can be provided before pregnancy, during pregnancy, and in the postpartum period. And examples of those services eligible include prenatal education classes, pregnancy support, childbirth support, and postpartum support. In summary, CDPHP is proud to be the only health plan in our service area expanding access to doula services, with the exception of the New York State Medicaid pilot in Western New York, which we actually tried to get in on and were told that it was closed. It is worth noting that due to inadequate reimbursement rates in the Medicaid program, we can't currently offer this benefit to our Medicaid members, and I will tell you that I desperately want to. This is where we really need this benefit. So any mandate that comes down that tells us that we should cover this for Medicaid really has to cover this with adequate rates for our providers so that we can offer this to our mothers. I want to thank you for your time and attention to this issue, and I welcome any questions that you have. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Doctor. Last, but certainly not least, Ms. Davis.
Good afternoon to the distinguished committee members, senators, and my fellow advocates providing testimony today. I thank the Senate Standing Committee on Health and the Senate Standing Committee on Mental Health for hosting this important hearing. My name is Yuki Davis, and I am the Manager of Policy and Advocacy at Every Mother Counts. I'm honored to be here with you all, and I'm grateful for the opportunity to address one of my favorite topics, the need to increase access to community-based doula support as one of many important strategies towards advancing birth equity in New York State. If you don't know, Every Mother Counts is a nonprofit organization dedicated to achieving quality, respectful, and equitable maternity care for all. While our work is national and even global, Every Mother Counts is based in New York, and we are deeply invested in advancing maternal health here. Our work in public education, grant-making, and thought leadership all aims to multidimensionally strengthen systems and increase the availability of models of care demonstrated to result in excellent maternal health outcomes and birthing experiences for all. One of these essential models of care is community-based doula support, an evidence-based, high-value model of care that we've heard much about today. Increasing access to doula support has been an area of priority for myself and my organization for a number of years, and through our advocacy, partnerships, research, and movement building, we have gained significant policy expertise on equitable access to doula support, both at the New York and national levels. Before proceeding, I do want to make one point clear. While we can all agree on the importance of doula support, especially as I bring up the caboose of this very amazing hearing, we cannot and should not expect doulas to be the silver bullet to solving the state's or nation's maternal health crises. Through their support and advocacy, doulas can and do help mitigate the lived impact of our flawed maternity care system, including the racism that birthing people of color experience. But in the end, these issues are structural, and we must work system-wide to make the change that our birthing people, families, and providers need, while continuing to improve access to doula care and support doulas as individual providers and a workforce. There are several policy pathways to make doula care more accessible in New York State, but above all, community engagement will be essential to ensuring that any proposed policies are well-designed, successfully implemented, and affect durable change. New York State is in the enviable, enviable position of having a strong group of well-established, longstanding, community-based doula programs, some of whom are represented here today. Successfully integrating doulas into New York's maternity care system requires that these community-based doula organizations are driving the solutions, as they've built invaluable understandings and perspectives on what is needed for our state's birthing people and families, and how to implement these changes effectively. Overall, the state can consider multiple policy avenues to improving access to doula support, including changes and training at the facility and provider levels to ensure doula integration and doula-friendly policies in birthing facilities, funding opportunities for community-based doula organizations, support for Black, Indigenous, and people of color-led community-based doula trainings, and Medicaid and private insurance reimbursement for doula support. Every Mother Counts recommends prioritizing statewide coverage of community-based doula services through Medicaid as a critical first step. As many other states are moving forward with widespread equitable and effective Medicaid doula coverage programs, New York must continue to innovate its approach if it seeks to be a national leader in maternal health and birth equity. At Every Mother Counts, we've built relationships with various stakeholder groups across the country, including doulas, healthcare providers, and other Medicaid state agencies, in order to understand, learn from, and inform the design and implementation of Medicaid doula coverage. We bring a national perspective to this issue while also having been deeply involved in advocacy and policymaking efforts to advance equitable Medicaid doula coverage in New York State specifically. It is with this perspective that we provide the following recommendations for successful, equitable, and effective implementation of a doula benefit under Medicaid. First, New York State should create paid inclusive opportunities for community-based doulas and community-based doula organizations to co-design a Medicaid benefit for doula support, and to be involved throughout implementation to continually address barriers, delays, and improvements that may come up. Early, sustained, and responsive inclusion of community-based doulas as leaders in the design and implementation process is critical to successful uptake and benefit implementation. This input and leadership should also be equitably compensated, as doulas and community-based doula organizations do not typically have funding for advocacy work and may otherwise be uncompensated for this labor. Next, New York State should develop requirements for doulas enrolling as Medicaid providers that create as few barriers as possible and align with the core competencies of community-based doula care without regulating or limiting doulas who elect not to seek Medicaid reimbursement. In creating a statewide Medicaid benefit, New York should facilitate enrollment of the most well-equipped doula workforce by providing flexible pathways that demonstrate that doulas meet the standard of care and core competencies of community-based doula care without additional barriers to entry. New York should also eliminate unnecessary cost-prohibitive processes from the enrollment process, including requiring certification or additional fees to enroll as a Medicaid provider. Additionally, doulas should not be required to be a mandated reporter. Not only is this unprecedented for other states, but it also jeopardizes the doula-client relationship at its core. To ensure flexibility and support throughout the enrollment process, there should be opportunities for doulas to enroll both as an individual Medicaid provider or as part of an organization or collective, following the lead of other states like New Jersey. This would allow for substantial administrative responsibilities associated with Medicaid enrollment, as well as with each individual health plan, to be shared by an overarching organization or collective, instead of placing the responsibility solely on individual community-based doulas. Building on my previous recommendation, New York should plan for infrastructure to support doulas in navigating the Medicaid reimbursement process, and consider and fund community-based doula organizations as hubs to provide necessary administrative billing, mentorship, and programmatic support for the most effective and supportive doula care possible. As noted, the processes of enrolling as a provider, billing accurately, and ensuring timely reimbursement, and following Medicaid regulations can be so burdensome on individual community-based doulas that it diminishes the utilization of the benefit, and can often take time and effort away from doulas doing what they do best, providing support to birthing families. Community-based doula organizations can provide critical infrastructure around billing, data collection, mentorship, reflective supervision, peer support, building robust referral networks, professional development, continuing education, and other administrative and programmatic assistance, to ensure that doulas are successful at providing much-needed care to birthing families. Funding for community-based programs, workforce development, and organizational responsibilities can allow for this additional necessary support without having to charge doulas for billing and other administrative assistance. My next recommendation for New York State is to apply the previously mentioned proposed reimbursement rate of $1,930 for the cost of care, including up to eight home visits during the prenatal and postpartum periods, and continuous labor support. As we heard earlier, this rate was determined through a consensus-building project led by the New York Coalition for Doula Access to reflect an appropriate and equitable rate for doula support, taking into the account the full scope of care and expenses that doulas can incur. And my final recommendation is that to ensure full integration of doula support into the healthcare system, in addition to Medicaid coverage, all health insurance plans should be required to cover doula support, including both public and private insurance. And any infrastructure for private insurance coverage of doula care should not create additional or duplicative processes for doulas beyond the processes and enrollment for Medicaid reimbursement. Every Mother Counts recommend, recommends the above-mentioned policies and actions as first steps towards ensuring that doula support is accessible to every birthing person in New York State. Together, we can advance long overdue progress to ensure that New York becomes a leader in maternal health and birth equity. To do that, we must build a maternity care system rooted in evidence and best practices, as well as equity, transparency, and accountability, so that all of New York's birthing families can access the high-quality, dignified maternity care they need and deserve. Thank you for the opportunity to join you all today. I'm happy to answer any questions, and Every Mother Counts welcomes any opportunity to collaborate moving forward.
Thank you, Ms. Davis. Senator Bruk?
Thank you all for wrapping us up here today and for sharing. Got to give a shout-out to my Rochester-area folks here for just sharing some of the experience that you've seen, and obviously all have been partners in this work of getting to where we are. I just want to ask a question to Dr. Warner. What a treat to have an insurance provider here, right? I think a lot of people were surprised that we had you, because, because you have been able to lead the way with reimbursement for doulas. So I had a question, you know, obviously the $1,500 isn't that surprising, it's what the governor and the commissioner have talked about, but you know, as I was listening to your testimony, I thought about how sometimes you've got to go to like physical therapy or something, and, and you go through and they say, okay, you need, you know, your two appointments, and then, oh no, actually you need four appointments, you've got to get approved to have more appointments. So in some ways, you know, especially I think of postpartum, you realize, ah, I need more help, right? Like, two, four appointments isn't enough. Do you have a mechanism for what that looks like, aside from, say, someone hits their number of visits per se, and how they get continuing care?
So when we built this benefit, we did it in conjunction with some local doulas who we really went to for advice and said, what sounds reasonable to you, and what does care look like for you? And what they told us was that around 12 visits split up between pre and postpartum, and that this number would be fair. And so that's where we've started. It, it doesn't mean that it can't change in the future, this is really brand new. But, but this way, there isn't kind of a jockeying for, for more visits if needed. This is really something that the doula then gets to work out with her patient.
Okay. And so you are open to, as you see how this rolls out, to see, you know, what is the need that, that arises from individuals?
I, I think that that would really be a conversation with the doulas first, around what, what on average is a reasonable number of visits that, that you need to cover. And I, and I hear from all the women who have spoken today that that can really look very different for different practices, and that the burden of call can look very different.
Yeah.
But that's where I'd begin.
And do you have any mechanism for tracking or kind of data intake to see as it is relatively new?
We, we will be able to track where we have actually provided reimbursement. So, you know, what I would like to know is, what are the outcomes like? We, we know from the statistics what they ought to look like, and of course, it's going to take a while to really get enough people accrued to really see statistical differences. So we'll do our best to track that over time.
And please be in touch once you do, so that the state can also learn. Thank you all.
Thank you, folks, for being with us today. You were the last panel, so as a, as a, as a wrap-up, and as the, as the token dude in the room, and the eve of International Women's Day, I was very glad to be here today. Obviously, a lot of, a lot of riveting testimony, a lot of important suggestions that we, of things that we should do, and I'll just highlight one before I pass it off to my colleague, so that she can wrap up. The, certainly, the budget battle that we're having right now, I am glad and thankful that the governor put forward a proposal related to, to, to doulas in the, in the budget. You will soon see what our suggestion is related to, related to that and so many other things when we put our one house out. But I will just reiterate something that I've said many times, both publicly and privately in the last, well, certainly for years, but certainly as it relates to this, and most of what we're talking about in our healthcare system, particularly our Medicaid system and our public health system, that all of these expenditures are not expenditures, they are investments. And they're investments, what you have made clear by talking about the work that you do every single day, is not only, as, as was said earlier by Ms. Lawson, as far as it being a value proposition and there being cost savings, which is certainly, for the penny pinchers, you know, God bless America, that it's there, it's there too, but it is also about having a, a better health system, and just a better system that serves our New Yorkers better, that serves birthing mothers, birthing people better, that serves their, these children better, and, and these are, there might be big asks, but, but actually creating adequate rates for doulas and including them is not an expenditure and is investment in having, in having better, better quality of life for all New Yorkers. So I'm certainly looking forward to, again, as the token dude, to fight along with all of you to make sure that we do that. And I will, as the token dude, I will do my last thing and pass it off to my colleague, so that this can be concluded correctly. Senator Bruk?
Thank you. Well done, ally. I, I just want to wrap by saying thank you to everyone in this room, thank you for everyone who does this work when there aren't bright lights and streaming, right? This work can be grueling. It happens, as, as one of the panelists said, at 2:00 a.m. sometimes, it happens over the course of days, over hours. You carry an emotional and physical load, and as a birthing person who had her doula, thank you for carrying that load, especially as a Black woman during what is this most scary and most joyful time was of my life. Having said that, you know, we are facing a crisis, and we are facing a crisis that we've been facing for quite some time, especially when it comes to our Black birthing people and our Black mothers. But if you had asked me a year and a half ago, as I was interviewing doulas, if I would be sitting here in front of a room full of people with doulas from actually all over the country, because we have some Texas representation here, I probably would have said, that's probably not going to happen that, that quickly. But the fact that we are at what I'm deeming Doula Day is tremendous, and it shows that we have the right people in the right positions to finally move this forward on a state level, and hopefully to be a model for the states who have not quite figured it out as well as we have. So my commitment to you all is to continue to bring you all to the table, whether you're community-based doulas, whether you're providers otherwise, people who have experienced doula care, because those are the voices that have to continue to inform the decisions we make as policymakers, but also as people who would love to experience, knowing what it's like. So as I said in the beginning, our mothers deserve better, our children deserve better, and we're committed to doing better. So thank you all so much.